Good afternoon and welcome. I am Councilmember Jason Dozier, Chair of Community Development Human Services Committee, and I call this meeting of Tuesday, March 14, 2023, to order. I am joined by colleagues, Councilmember Jason Winston to my right, Councilmember Antonio Lewis, and then to my left, I have Councilmember Liliana Bakhtiari. The first item on the agenda is to adopt the agenda. I'll take a motion, motion by Lewis, second by Bakhtiari. Please open the vote.
Okay, the vote is open. The vote is closed?
All right, the agenda is adopted, four yeas, your nays. Next item is to approve all the amendments. There's a motion to move by Liliana Bakhtiari, second by Antonio Lewis. Please open the vote.
The vote is open? The vote is closed?
All right, the minutes are adopted, four yeas, your nays. Next is public comment. And just a reminder, as we get the list up, for public comment, we ask folks, you have three minutes to speak. As you're speaking, I will gently let you know that you have 30 seconds left into the microphone, just so as not disrupt what you have. Say again? Well, we'll go through the, since we don't have you in the system, for whatever reason, we'll still have you speak, but we'll have you speak last, Brother Muhammad, if that's okay. We'll get it, we'll still give you an opportunity to have your three minutes, sir, but because the names in the system are in the system, we'll go through that first, and then we'll make amendment to... Brother Muhammad, well, that's a technical issue, we'll get it worked out, but... We're going to give you your three minutes, sir, but we're going to go through this list first, and then we'll give you your three minutes. But we don't, we don't know if you were here first, that's why we use the system. Clearly, there might be an issue with the system, we'll get it worked out internally with the City Council staff, but in the meantime, we're going to go with what's in the system, and then we'll give you your three minutes at the end. So our first speaker is Mr. Richard Harker.
Executive Director of Historic Oakland Foundation. I'm here with our friends at Park Pride to encourage you, as you work on the budget this year, to substantially increase the budget for park maintenance for the Department of Parks and Rec. We know that parks and green space are an essential part of what makes Atlanta Atlanta. They're also an integral part of Atlantans' lives. Seniors enjoy exercise programs at Chastain Park. Kids play on the playground at Westside Park or play baseball at Perkison. Communities gather and enjoy festivals at Howe Park or Grant Park. People make lifelong friends and build community over kickball in Piedmont Park, midnight basketball at C.T. Martin, or at the D.H. Stanton Splash Pad. And of course, Atlantans learn about the city's past and how to chart a more just and equitable future together at the site of the Chattahoochee Brick Company or Historic Oakland Cemetery. We all know that parks are an essential part of a healthy, happy, safe and prosperous community, but not just parks, safe, well-maintained parks. Parks that don't have cracked sidewalks, or downed tree limbs, or overgrown grass. Parks that people want to use, parks that people enjoy using, parks that become an essential part of our lives, of our city's fabric. We know that great, well-maintained parks are not just nice-to-haves, but are an essential part of healthy, vibrant neighborhoods, communities and cities. One of the many things we learned from the pandemic is the importance of parks and green space for our mental health, physical well-being, and sense of community and communal well-being. And yet, reflecting back on last year, we know that adequate, let alone good, park maintenance was a real challenge for the Department of Parks and Rec. Even at Historic Oakland Cemetery, where we're fortunate enough to have a nonprofit organization that I lead, working alongside Parks and Rec to support maintenance, the city crew was short-staffed for much of the year, and sections of the cemetery became overgrown and unruly. This has been a common issue throughout the city. So I urge you, City Council, to continue investing in our city's parks and green space, both in acquiring more land so parks are more accessible to everybody, but also to make sure that the maintenance budget goes up so that all of our incredible parks are given the love and care that they need every single day to make Atlanta's park system truly one of the best in the country. Thank you for your time, thank you for all you do for the city, and thank you for your hard work in supporting parks.
Thank you. Now, before we move to our next speaker, I do want to acknowledge we've been joined by my colleague, Councilmember Keisha Waits. All right, next speaker is Henry Jordan.
Give him now to the Spirit of God to everyone that is here. The wise have not power by own body, but the husband. And likewise, also, the husband has not power by his own body, but the wife. 1 Corinthians 7, Chapter 4, 1st. Both marriage and celibacy are gifts of the Holy Spirit. When James and other women have power of his body, then he belonged to that woman and not me. Because James had been with so many women, the Lord said, those spirits will jump on me. These things hast thou done, and I kept silence. Thou thoughtest that I was altogether such as one as thyself, but I will reprove thee and set them in order before thine eyes. Psalms 50, Chapter 50, Chapter 21, verse 1. In reality, there are those who forget God and face certain destruction unless they repent. Know ye not that the unrighteous shall not inherit the kingdom of God? Be not deceived, neither phonicated, nor idolatrous, nor adulterous, nor infaminate, nor abusive of themselves with mankind. 1 Corinthians 6, Chapter 9, verse 1. The unrighteous shall not inherit the kingdom of God. There were evidently some in the Corinthians Assembly who had professed Christianity as a system of doctrine, but not as a rule of life. Like sheep, they are laid in the grave. Death shall feed on them, and the upright shall have dominion over them in the morning. And their beauty shall consume in the grave from their dwelling. Psalms 49, Chapter 14, verse 1. The psalm was therefore written to enable God's people to rise above the ungodly drive for riches. If you have destroyed, defrauded, lied, robbed, deceived, oppressed, et cetera, you have chosen the way of Satan and not Jesus' way. To be led by the Spirit of Christ is a blessing that we need. God ordained that righteousness fore to exceed over unrighteousness, because he hates evil in us, around us, and in others. And Christ has more for us than we have for ourselves. We don't love ourselves much as Christ loved us, because he got the heaven and hell to put you in, not me.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. All right, next speaker is Dana Stevens. Ms. Stevens, you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Board. My name is Dana Stevens, and I just relocated here about a year ago from Chicago, Illinois. And almost those 30 years that I was there, I worked out on the streets with gang members. 18 years, I put together a program, The Life Learning Dorm at Cook County Jail. 13 years, I was a speaker for a program called the Victim Impact Panel for the Juvenile Detention Center. And the last eight years, I was a Restorative Practices Coach for Chicago Public Schools. And like I said, I've been here for a year, kind of been hanging low. I live in the Old Fourth Ward community, where I do see elements of the inner city. I did live in the inner city of Chicago, so I can learn the plight of those in the community. And so I am just here again today, just to present myself with my work and with my resume of what I've done, to see if I can be of assistance to you in helping our communities with our inner-city-at-risk youth. I started a basketball program to get kids off the streets. Our schools are doing what they can, but they need more support for the young people when they're not in school. And so I really am just here to make myself known, to see where I might be able to age you, or you could direct me to a place where I might be able to be of assistance, to take the experiences that I've had over those 30 years, learning what young people need, what has been missing, and maybe we can somehow provide some of those things to keep them from, I think, keep them from doing the things that they're doing without some positive direction. So I've just put together a little bit, I do have a for-profit, I also have a non-for-profit that I did bring from Chicago down here. But I did start up a mentoring program called One Love Kings, You're More Than a Man, You're a King. And it was adopted by Chicago Public Schools as a, you have to go through a whole lot to be a vendor. So anyway, I just have my information here, I don't know if I can give it to somebody, but just want to make myself available to you in any way I can support the young people, which is my calling and my passion. So thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Our next speaker is Michael Halakey.
Good afternoon. So I'm Michael Halakey, Executive Director for Park Pride, and here today, I just want to elevate some of the different comments we've been hearing over these past couple of meetings, where members of the community and nonprofit organizations have come to raise their voices on the issue of underfunding of park maintenance in ways that that negatively impacts the quality of life for residents, as well as the city as a whole. I have five main points. The first one, let's talk about trash. Ever since the beginning of the pandemic, people have discovered a new appreciation of parks and are visiting in greater numbers and with greater frequency. Inevitably, more people coming into our parks have brought more wear and tear on the green spaces and brought with them more trash. Several community members who've come to this group have specified ways that that affects them on a local level. We've heard from Carrie Salisbury, from the Alliance for the Activation of Cook Park, who described how overflowing trash in her park is a consistent issue. Winfrey Young, the head of Pittman Park, the Friends of Pittman Park and the Vice President of the Pittsburgh Neighborhood Associations, shared that just to get into Pittman Park, visitors need to walk over trash. And then Louis Woodson from NPUP, who shared that volunteers recently pulled 50 tires out of Melvin Drive Park that had been dumped years ago. And his story suggests that poorly maintained parks become dumping grounds, a truth that's exacerbated by inadequate funding for park maintenance. Second, let's talk about invasives. Atlanta's parks have an invasive plant problem that requires maintenance dollars to bring it under control. This, the invasives issue has become such an issue, it actually prevents access for a lot of our different passive parks. Taryn Arbiter from Chooswood Park shared that a whole side of her park is inaccessible because of the invasives that block that path. And she's not alone, this is an issue that really does require an invasive species management plan, as well as the people power and those trained in invasive species to get a handle on it. Third, let's talk about the unsung heroes of city government, the frontline workers within Atlanta's Department of Parks and Recreation. Park workers deserve living wages and promising career paths. It's not just the quality of life that's affected by those who enjoy parks. When we're inadequately funding parks, it also affects the quality of life for our park workers. Currently, the wages that are offered for park workers are too low, they're not competitive with private landscape companies, nor other departments within the city or other public entities. That's part of the reason behind the 26% staffing shortage within DPR. Another reason for DPR staffing shortage is that a number of these open positions on our parks crews are unfunded and therefore unable to be filled. This cannot continue to be allowed when park crews are short-staffed, everyone is stretched thin and unable to adhere to the high standard of park stewardship. Our Parks and Recreation Master Plan had a number of different steps on how to both increase performance pay, as well as to fully staff, and those right now are stalled out because of the lack of adequate funding for park maintenance. So appreciate your time today, and appreciate you considering these efforts, looking at the budget for the coming year.
Thank you, and I believe Councilmember Bakhtiari had a quick comment.
A very quick comment, so I wanted to thank Michael Halakey and Park Pride, and just say that I'm glad that we were able to donate just under $3 million to Park Pride for parks in our districts on this council, but we also fully recognize that, while great, is not enough to offset everything else that needs to happen with parks, and that we will all be advocating for an increase in budget. So thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Bakhtiari. All right, our next speaker is Greg Levine.
Good afternoon, everyone. Greg Levine, I'm the co-executive director of Trees Atlanta, and like Michael, over the, I've been working for Trees Atlanta for 28 years, and have seen the funding unfortunately not growing along with the beauty of growth in our parks. And I think that, just observing, observing for all that time, and actually running an organization where we have to hire people on a seasonal basis, we hire 18 people this year, it's very challenging because we can't compete with salaries. And one of the main reasons why I think Parks Department has that challenge is y'all still are having a challenge keeping up with the seasonal salaries. And one of the reasons why I think we need to get this budget up is so that we can move from a seasonal positions, more of them to full-time positions. We have a, you know, a lot of people get hired for mowing and blowing in the spring and summer, and then when winter comes, they, many of the people go, and we have problems with a growing graffiti problem, trash in our parks, as was been said earlier, and also just the maintenance of our trees, it's a big challenge, we don't have enough crews that are maintaining our trees. There's both a, there's a, obviously, I could go on for hours about the importance of trees and the environmental benefits, but also just from a standpoint of safety for the community, you want our trees to be healthy in our parks and along our streets, and right now, those crews are very minimal. So we really need to bring up the salaries to maintain, keeping staff, but also to transfer the seasonal, so make them more full-time. It's very hard to hire people, as y'all know, right now, and y'all salaries are better than ours, and we're all having a hard time hiring people. Add one more, I'm sure I've remembered everything here, the forestry crews specifically. I think right now, we have one crew that removes and prunes trees, and we've got miles and miles of streets. A number of years, we had somebody, you know, a family that was killed by a fallen tree. It's not good for, for keeping trees when the trees do those things, the tree was dead and dying, it should have been removed, it was not a city tree, but that is a challenge, and we have so many city trees that are necessary for the health of the city. So not to remove the trees, but remove the hazard, again, just more funding for it. So thank you for all your work and your time.
All right, thank you. Our next speaker is Brother Antonio Muhammad.
I am that I am, a Negro, king of kings, committed in dignity and integrity. And I command the ancestors, I command the dog matter, dog matter divine, mama of the cosmos. Dog matter divine feminine energy, the first energy in the universe, feminine. I command the dog matter mama of the universe to let you know, dog matter anti-matter feminine energy on earth, and the masculine energy on earth. I got your back. She wants you to know, I have your back. You have the soul for energy, you have the spiritual energy, and you have the constant records, miseducated Negro. We have a problem here in this city. We're a spiritual people, all humanity. We're a people that need to be most sensitive. I say you got three new appointees for the Atlanta Beltline Advisory Committee. How is that going to help the people that live on the street? How is that going to help the people that miss margin, come and tell you we need rent control? How is that going to help the people that don't have a place to call their home in Atlanta? We got you, miseducated Negro of the 21st century. Carter G. Wilson wrote this book 90 years ago. Why? Because he knew then, we rather have the access to resources and money for our own self without recognizing that the mama of the cosmos says 360 degrees that we ought to represent on earth, not 33 degrees according to the Masonic order. But I ask you to recognize, we have to turn back daughters of the earth, dog matter, divine, feminine energy, anti-matter, and recognize you are the teachers. You are the ones who must have the highest quality of character, the highest quality of integrity, for the benefit to raise the children and represent the duality and the polarity of the feminine and masculine energy. We have to return back now, because it's our time to do right. You have people, pictures on the wall of the civil rights workers, Martin Luther King. I say you have Frederick Douglass on the wall, Harriet Tubman. What would they say about you, miseducated Negro of the 21st century? You got Dr. Larry Street over there, and Simpson Road over there.
30 seconds.
Oh, Asprey Street. Dr. Lawrence never worked with the Southern Christian Leadership Conference, to have access to opportunity for dog matter people, anti-matter people that look like the majority of members of this committee. But when I come and listen to you, when I come and see you, very few of y'all be on the point to want to do for the ones that don't have access. And I come down here for the last 11 years, I signs in, you don't even want us to talk no more, don't even want us to represent the issues that is pertinent to the real of humanity. I thank you, as a not. Assalamualaikum. I say, I say, and I say, Maradona Maitreya Hotel.
Thank you, Brother Muhammad. All right, colleagues, the next item on the agenda is presentations, but if you would indulge me, I would like to take on... Can you, well, I'll give you an opportunity to get your three minutes, come to the podium, if you can state your name, and that way we have it on record, but I recognize there were some issues with the...
I'm not, I'm not. First of all, thank you.
State your name so that it can...
My name is Kimberly Brooks, and this is my favorite council members for the most part, in this, in one room, right now, for this. And I try not to be a realist about things, but the prioritization of equity in the city of Atlanta is a priority of mine. So one thing that's taken into consideration is our budget, because the efficiency use of our budget is what pretty much ideal tells us what's our priority in the city. So Atlanta Housing Authority issued a piece of legislation that stated the family-furthering fur housing rule taking a major step towards routing out longstanding inequities in housing, fostering inclusive communities. So this actually was taken across the city, because what we see outside on the last council meeting of individuals that were coming to this podium in Peoplestown Community, and they were talking about housing issues, so those are code enforcement issues for the most part. A lot of these communities don't know to contact code enforcement. Additionally, those are ADA violations, I hear a person that's in a wheelchair, not able to access the area, they need to do to, in event of a fire, they would need to be able to do that, for establishments and organizations to continue to exist, and these violations, for me, because I'm very sensitive when it comes to seniors, how are they operating in that sense? The Atlanta Housing Authority, I went to a meeting a couple of weeks ago, discussed a new rule development of the Boon Home community and different communities. So Atlanta Housing Authority says that it houses 27,000 individuals for the city of Atlanta, approximately 46,000 families and 46,000 people. When I looked at their housing recommendations, they only house possibly about 10,000. The definitions of affordable are very alarming, because the state of Georgia, as we stated in the last minute, is a right-to-work state. So affordable has to be equated with what the minimum wages are for that city for a person that's working 40 hours a week. We look at the state of Georgia's income for food stamps, welfare, and things like that, you're talking about sustainability here, when you're talking about whether a person can live in a community. So ultimately, the city of Atlanta's intervention component, I feel necessary, is, I can't tell you to stop, but going forward, if you permanently enact, say, we have Cop City going on in the Safety Department, we have Atlanta Housing Authority, what they're building established in 2024, now we have our Department of Labor, unless things actually... unless things actually come to a halt and we start to research first and do an assessment first, once those dollars have been spent, you can't get them back. You could permanently displace a lot of citizens, most of the poor citizens in the City of Atlanta. In addition to that, you could put them all in the economic despair, which where they would not be able to recover from because Atlanta would be sold at that point. So I petition you to look at the current holistically information that's being out there. And I can't tell you to bring things to a halt. But when I hear things like parks and things like that being prior to us, and I walk around on the street and we're dealing with homelessness, we're dealing with senior citizens, we're dealing with code enforcement, we're doing violations, I just want to see a prioritization of that in our budgets and in our conversations that we're having. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. That concludes public comment for all this time, I think. So next item is supposed to be presentations. However, colleagues, if you want to indulge me, we have a number of people who are here and have to get back to other obligations, family commitments, work commitments. Now I'd like to take on some of those communications first. The first item is actually going to be item number 41, which I believe is coming off of Hill, Ms. Ladonna Barnes. If you can come to the podium, and Jared, if you can sign in the caption.
Item number 41 is 23C 5029, a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, appointing Ms. Ladonna Barnes, MBA, to serve as a member of the Municipal Market Company Board of Directors. His appointment is for a term of two years.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. If you don't mind sharing with the board or sharing with the committee why you're interested in this appointment, and tell us a little bit about yourself as well, so we know kind of how you got on your journey to be in front of us today.
Absolutely. So I am a 23-year resident of Atlanta and surrounding areas. I came to Atlanta initially as a teacher, working for Teach for America, and stayed here for the duration of my career. My background is very much rooted in the public sector. I spent the greater part of the last 15 years working in strategy, finance, and operational consulting with various municipalities across the southeast, including the City of Atlanta and DeKalb County locally, as well as down to Louisiana, up through Pittsburgh, Gary, Indiana. And so my experience is very much rooted in public service. I've recently made a transition to the business sector, where I got my executive MBA from Goizueta, and now am working in management consulting at Accenture. And so I think serving on the board is a perfect way to marry my experience in public service with my current business acumen.
Thank you. Turning it over to colleagues for comments and questions, Councilmember Bakhtiari.
Ms. Barnes, I'm really glad that you're nominated for this position, especially hearing your experience. I'm certain you saw the audit on the market.
I did, I did. I grew up going to the market. My dad sells a pharmacy just across from it. It is, well, the audit was disheartening. I think it's an opportunity for the city to step up and assist and try to find out where that struggle is. So I just want to say, it sits in my district. I'm a resource to you. I'm happy to give you my number before you leave, because I would love to assist the board in any way possible, making sure that the curb market continues to succeed and stays in that community. So I'm very, very happy you're coming on board. And if no one else has questions, I wanted to move to approve.
Motion by Bakhtiari to approve, seconded by Wes Morland. Any discussion? Seeing none. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Motion carries six yeas, you unase. Thank you so much for your service to the City of Atlanta. All right, the next item, we're going to take number 38, Ms. Suzanne Blam. If you could come on to the podium.
Item number 38 is 23C 5,008, a communication from council members Liliana Bakhtiari, Alex Wan, Howard Shook, Mary Norwood, and Matt West Morland, reappointing Ms. Susan Blam to the Tree Conservation Commission. This appointment is for a term of two years to begin retroactively August 5, 2021, and expire August 4, 2023.
Blam, good to see you again. If you don't mind sharing with the committee your background and why you're interested in your reappointment.
Well, thank you very much for having me today. My name is Suzanne Blam. I've lived in Atlanta since 1971. We moved into an apartment complex in Stone Mountain when we came here from all over the world. But one of the things that struck me as different then and what I'm seeing evolving today is when I was a little kid, my mom could send me out to go play in the woods that surrounded our multifamily complex. I have been in the city a long time, and I've seen a decline in our canopy. And I know that we have the tools to fix that problem. One of them is the tree ordinance, and I would like to continue to serve to not just enforce the tree ordinance, but to also help in the efforts to rewrite it, to make it more effective, and to also educate that a lot of the challenges that we're facing our city are not an either or. It's not affordable housing or a healthy environment. Both are needed to make this a livable city. So I would really appreciate it if I continue in this role, and especially to help from an education standpoint.
Thank you, Ms. Blam. Turning it over to colleagues, Councilmember Bakhtiari.
So Ms. Blam has been extremely patient with this renomination. We've been working on it for a minute. I am honored to be a part of the group that nominated you to be reappointed to this commission. And I can think of no better person, given the work that you do. And one, I'm proud to call you a constituent, but the work that you do in the community, how involved you've been in the tree protection ordinance, on the education, and the fact that you're not saying it's an either or, but yes and, all of which I think is vital for someone to be a part of this commission. So I'm very happy you are going to be reappointed. I'm very happy we will have you for a number of more years, and I move to approve.
Motion to approve by Bakhtiari, seconded by Wes Morland. Any discussion? Seeing none. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Motion carries. Waiting for it to populate before I.
Five yeas, you unase.
Thank you so much. Motion carries five yeas, you unase. Thank you so much, Ms. Blam.
Bye-bye.
All right, colleagues, the next item will be item number 40, Ms. Shanae Joseph. If you could come to the podium.
Item number 40, 23C 5028, a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, appointing Ms. Shanae Joseph to serve as a member of the Municipal Market Company Board of Directors. This appointment is for a term of two years.
And Ms. Joseph, likewise, if you could tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in this appointment.
Sure. Good afternoon. It is afternoon. Yes, everyone. I am Shanae Joseph. I'm the president and CEO of the Historic District Development Corporation. We are a community development corporation located in the Old Fourth Ward. I'm right now really focusing on the revitalization for Auburn Avenue. I guess I'm really interested, when this position was presented to me, it just made a lot of sense with the work that we've been doing in the community. I actually started as an intern at HDC back in 1997, and I have basically been a part of the organization since that time. We are really working on a more neighborhood-based strategy where we're taking our assets, we're leveraging them to really serve the community, as opposed to just being a space where people can come and get food. How do we have a place where people truly can come together and gather? And so being as a part of this restructuring of the curb market, I think that the skill set that I bring in working at HDC, working in communities for the last 20-something years, and just being a person who really loves the neighborhood, will really lend to being an assistance as much as possible to how it moves forward.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from colleagues? Councilmember Bakhtiari.
Shanae Joseph is dope. I can think of no better person to be appointed to this. I'm lucky to have her in our community. And if I could, I'd appoint you to 20 more things. So move to approve.
Motion by Bakhtiari, seconded by Winston. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Motion approved, carries five yeas, you unase. Thank you so much for your continued service to the City of Atlanta. All right, the last communication that we have is actually item number four on the agenda, Ms. Yonina Gray.
Item number four is 23C 5039, a communication from Council President Doug Shipman, appointing Ms. Yonina Gray to serve as a member of the Housing Commission representing the mortgage lending community. This appointment is for a term of three years.
Ms. Gray, second or I guess fourth verse, same as the first. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in this appointment.
Sure. Great. Happy to be here. Thank you for having me. My name is Yonina Gray. Super pleased about the opportunity to be on this council. I'm originally from the City of Chicago. I've been here for seven years. I have a background of about 15 years of focused on community development finance. So I'm a community development finance practitioner. When I moved here seven years ago, I had the pleasure of opening a community development financial institution southeast office here in Atlanta, which was really about socializing the value of strategic partnerships across the scale of all different types of developers to ensure that they know what kinds of resources are available to them to finance high-impact projects. I think there are a number of opportunities here at the city to think about how to realign a shared north star for all of the parties that are thinking about housing, affordable and market rate in the city as it grows, and to really think about how we can create places and communities that are exciting and accessible, not just to transplants like me, but really refocusing on natives to make sure that they have opportunities to be upwardly mobile as I have. I'm also the product of affordable housing in Chicago and incredibly proud of that background, and looking forward to partnering with a number of really smart people here to think about how to expand our vision for housing here in the city.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Any questions or comments from colleagues? Motion to approve by Bakhtiari, seconded by Winston. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Motion approved, carries six yeas, you unase. Thank you, Ms. Gray, for your service to the City of Atlanta. All right, that concludes communications, I believe. That takes us back to our regularly scheduled programming, and we are on presentations. Our first presentation today is Mr. Eugene Jones Jr., President and CEO of Atlanta Housing. Good to see you, sir.
Lot of people from Chicago. Good afternoon. Councilmembers, good morning, Chair. Good afternoon. Glad to be here. Glad to be honored to be here again to bring you, give you an update about what's going on in Atlanta Housing. I want to talk to you about our strategic plan. Do I do this slide? There we go. Little bit of background. The work on the strategic plan was launched in January 2021. HA conducted, Atlanta Housing conducted dozens of meetings with staff, stakeholders, public agencies, and others. The previous strategic plan, known as Vision 2022, concluded on June 30, 2022. The strategic plan focuses on increased visibility of the agency's plans, our progress, and key successes to foster confidence and accountability in the agency's work. The new plan aligns with Mayor Dickens' strategic priorities. Who we are, we've known that for a long time. It's changed. It's getting better. It's getting bigger, and we're servicing a lot of Atlantans here in this great city of Atlanta. Talk about the vision, mission, and values. Our vision, our vision is a city where all Atlantans have a place they are proud to call home and can thrive regardless of their income or address. Our mission, the mission of Atlanta Housing is to open doors to safe, quality, affordable homes, build inclusive communities of choice, and create opportunities for economic mobility that anyone can move anywhere in the City of Atlanta. And our values, we are a team of bold, compassionate, and committed changemakers dedicated to working collaboratively to serve the Atlanta community with our unique resources. To the City Council, we have great staff. We have great compassion, and we're very humanistic about how we approach, how we serve our city in Atlanta. Our next slide is about our goals. We have six goals. The first goal is create or preserve 10,000 housing units. Goal two, enhance housing assistance resources for Atlantans in need. Goal three, create opportunities for individuals, families, and children to thrive. Goal four, build or expand partnerships to pool resources and maximize impact for the benefits of our families. Number five, communicate the impact of Atlanta Housing's work in Atlanta. And goal six, strengthen Atlanta Housing operations. The next slide, just want to point out a few things. Our goal number one, create or preserve 10,000 affordable housing units. Our 1A goal is produce 5,000 new affordable units. Repurpose 300 acres of Atlanta-owned vacant land towards housing, create healthy, thriving neighborhoods. Two, to support the creation of 5,000 units, invest in at least $220 million over five years. Preserve the next 5,000 units in Atlanta Housing existing portfolio. To support the preservation of 5,000 units, invest at least $30 million over five years. Increase designation of sustainable certified units in our portfolio to 33% to lower the overall cost of living for our residents. If you look at this next slide, it shows you where our saturation of what we're proposing to do, affordable housing, where we're at in affordable housing already. But it gives you a snapshot of where we're at in the City of Atlanta, and how we're growing, and how we designate tier one, tier two, and tier three. Our next goal is goal number two, enhance housing assistance resources for Atlantans in need. Continue to provide stable housing for 1,900 families and individuals per year experiencing or heightening risk of homelessness. We don't want to be the cause of homelessness. We want to correct, create, and we want to collaborate with other nonprofit agencies and our stakeholders. Provide emergency assistance to 1,800 families and individuals facing eviction over five years. Increase the number of Atlanta Housing households living in amenity-rich and transit-coordinated neighborhoods to 3,500. That means we wanted to create next to our transportation corridors to provide more affordable housing in those districts. Provide 1,400 new families and homeownership opportunities to help build wealth and combat displacement. We have the best robust homeownership program across the country, and we intend to increase it ever so more for our next five years in our strategic plan. Goal number three, create opportunities for individuals, families, and children to thrive. Advance efforts to address youth achievement by coordinating a creative career educational pipeline for programs and services for Atlanta Housing and assisted youth. Through increased partnerships, support residents to prepare for, prepare, prepare for, connect to, and succeed in jobs and careers. And three C, provide a continuing care for Atlanta Housing and assisted seniors to enable them to stay healthy, live independently, and with dignity in their homes. Goal number four, build or expand partnerships to pool resources and maximize impact for the benefit of families. Secure a minimum of $500,000 to new funding annually to support Atlanta's housing mission. Collaborate with public agencies initiatives to leverage resource to align efforts, and also raise $2 million to improve energy efficiency in Atlanta Housing units. Goal number five, communicate the impact of Atlanta Housing's work in Atlanta. That's where we want to really strengthen, to let the word out of what Atlanta Housing is actually doing for the City of Atlanta. Increase visibility into our progress and key successes to foster confidence in Atlanta Housing's work. Provide targeted communication and frequent updates to key stakeholders. Goal number six, strengthening Atlanta Housing operations. Increase efficiency, improve access to programs and services, and foster staff engagement with the Atlanta Housing families, and improve access to programs and services. Create economic opportunity of Atlanta Housing residents and disadvantaged businesses for achieving 35% participation in eligible Atlanta Housing contracts for minority, women, and resident-owned small businesses, our Section Three program. In support of the City of Atlanta's 2019 Clean Energy Resolution to achieve 100% clean energy by 2035, HA will reduce its carbon footprint by 25% in five years. Our next steps are very, very important to us. Internal and external briefings to launch the plan have begun, aim to inform and engage stakeholders, partners, and community leaders. An interactive dashboard is published to Atlanta Housing, to our email site, atlantahousing.org, that includes a map of Atlanta Housing's current vouchers, planned real estate development initiatives. Work is already underway to provide additional tracking of progress against all six goals and key metrics. The plan will inform the fiscal year 2024 moving to work plan, MTW plan, business planning, and FY 2024 budget, of all which are underway or will kick off shortly. I just want to point out goal number three. Goal number three, create opportunities for individuals, families, and children to thrive. Is a golden example to the mayor creating the Year of the Youth. We want to support the Year of the Youth for the mayor. And on the next slide, we create opportunities to thrive. HA serves 18,796 youths and youth adults age zero to 24. HA serves 18,796 youths and youth adults aged zero to 24. And here's a breakdown of where we assist in our youth throughout this city and also the assisted youth programs that we're collaborating with the city and all of our other partners in this city. Here's our youth programs by the numbers. Holiday and Summer Camps, 351. Total of 14,149 program visits, $60,000 worth of scholarships. We receive, 20 of them received from our youth and youth achieving participants of 403. Now, I want to belabor you with the numbers, but we have a great, robust program. Book-rich environments, 1,300 books that we've given out to our children, and we continue to do that every day because it's the right thing to do. Career opportunities to thrive, our core youth programs, after-school, life skills, summer camps, book-rich scholarships, and Santa for a Day. We have an internship program. We have an internship program every year. Right now, we have 20 positions that we're getting ready to open up for the summer, and we're probably also going to increase that through the winter months when some of these individuals who are college-bound students to work with us during the holiday celebration. It's an eight-week paid program, internship program, and they earn $15 an hour, which is a great opportunity to assist and help in their college education. Goal number four is to build or expand partnerships to pool resources and maximize impact for benefits of families. Look at the next slide of partnership opportunities is 110. 110 is a new initiative that's just started, the first part of this year. We launched 110 end of January. We had 30 Atlanta Housing participants to start skills development training in March. 110 Coalition Companies have committed to 1 million jobs and promotions for Black Americans over 10 years. 508 Atlanta Housing participants will be trained and connected to families sustaining jobs within 10 years. This is a wonderful program with a connection with 110, who are providing sponsorships, Delta Airlines, a lot of companies outside of Atlanta, inside Atlanta, providing jobs. We have an inventory of individuals who haven't received a college education. We have women, and we're trying to connect those dots, provide them training and good-paying jobs. Some of these jobs are being paid, going through a training period between eight and 14 weeks of at least $60,000 that they've been almost guaranteeing if they go through this program, which is something that we are so, so involved in that we're going to increase as we look at opportunities with these great companies in which they can earn benefits, and we can get them off our program in a homeownership program and get the next person in who really needs our services to provide them a roof over their head. And I think, councilmembers, that's my presentation. I know you don't have any questions, so I can skip that, but I'm open up to questions, councilmen, and I appreciate the time and the effort. I have a great staff, we have a great commission, a great board chair who assisted and helped us with this five-year strategic plan. I want to give them thanks, and I want to ask for your support in our strategic plan.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for your presentation. Out the sight of my eyes, I see my colleagues furiously taking notes during your presentation, so I know you're not quite off the hook yet with questions, but we'll get you there. Before I turn over to my colleagues, I just want to just fire off three quick questions. The first, you said something that really raised the light bulb for me. You called it transit-connected communities. One of the things that I think about a lot in terms of transit access for a lot of our communities that Atlanta Housing supports is that it's not great in a lot of parts of our city as it is today. One example I give is in my home community, Mechanicsville, the old McDaniel Glen redevelopment, the Columbia Mechanicsville project is served by the Route 40, is about an hour-long headways. Scholars Landing, which is also in my district, fares a little bit better. The 813 comes about every 40 minutes. However, there's not, because there are not a lot of amenities in these parts of our communities, folks are much more reliant on transit to get to their grocery store, to get their kids to daycare. And so, two parts to that question. One, is there anything that we're doing with regards to MARTA as y'all are looking at building new, 5,000 new units as we're going through a MARTA bus redesign effort across the city to get better service, more consistent service with Atlanta Housing projects? And also, as we look to acquire properties, I know you say you're looking at near transit lines, but it's a way to retrofit existing communities that are currently served by MARTA to get better service. So, I guess is how active is Atlanta Housing in that conversation? And then, number two, where there's not an opportunity to get some changes from MARTA on that, what are we doing to whether retrofit or to enhance new communities with amenities such as grocery? I know we talked about Heritage Station in the past, but Mechanicsville needs commercial support as well. Are we setting aside any space for commercial activity? I know that's every square foot of commercial that we're providing is not a square foot of housing that we're not providing, so I know it could potentially exceed your mandate, exceed your charter, but at the end of the day, you're building communities. So, what can the city even potentially do to help you get to that point where residents don't have to go across town to get basic services?
So, to answer your question, Chair, we are looking at Mechanicsville. We're getting ready to go back into the community and sit down with the stakeholders, and we're going to talk about where we need to go further on because I think it's very, very important to us. And also, as we make our compliance issues with HUD, we need to make sure that we're sitting down discussing this. With MARTA, yes, we are open to any discussion with MARTA. We are looking at their proposal, where they're going to be looking at their transit-oriented, increasing their lines. But we also, we're looking at opportunities which they come to us and they sit down, we're in discussions with them about some of the opportunities, which are project-based rental assistance if we can make some type of collaborative effort. But we think that's the best way HUD, US Department of Housing and Development, is very, very keen on transit-oriented designations, and we want to sit there and we want to participate and partner as much as we can with the funding that we have. And so, we're opening that door, and we're always going to report back to you to see how successful we've been in that endeavor.
Thank you. And I know, I mean, there's plans for BRT lines, arterial rapid transit lines, things like that. So, the more of that work is being aligned with y'all's mission and y'all's work, I think the better our communities will.
I know that's very important to the city, and we want to make sure that we're a part of improving that in a positive way.
Absolutely. And then, just my other question, the goal to acquire or to build or produce 5,000 new affordable units. I'm curious how y'all are going about that. Are y'all acquiring land? I mean, I know the land bank is going to be presenting next to talk about what they're doing. Or are y'all, I know there's certain former housing projects that haven't been reactivated in a long time. Is that part of that kind of goal setting as well? Can you just unpack that a little?
Well, probably when we start going forward to Civic Center, that's going to be another about 2,000 units. In that, there's going to be a great number of affordable housing. When we look at Inglewood, that's another big development that we have. That's going to be about 1,300 units. And then, we also have Bowen Homes with Choice Neighborhoods. We hopefully are going to be successful with that, hopefully in October. And it's going to be another over 2,000 units. And so, we know we can get there. And I'm not sure if we're going to be acquiring any new land. We want to make sure that we build on the vacant land that we have. We're also going to look at acquiring some new developments or looking at developments who have gone past their 15-year use period from HUD programs and see if we can acquire some more units and preserve a lot of these units that are going to go back or try to go back on the market side. So, we're going to be looking at that also. So, we're going to get to our 10,000. I think this strategic plan is going to get us there and is going to keep our feet to the fire. We don't have time to procrastinate. We got to move forward quickly and provide and produce these units so that we can at least put it in in affordable housing need in the City of Atlanta.
Absolutely. And I know y'all are also part of the housing strike force work that's been.
That's correct.
One of the things I think about is being a Mechanicsville resident, the parts of the Turner Field, Atlanta Fulton County Recreation owned parking lots that weren't part of the previous RFP, the giant seas of surface parking that aren't planned for future development. It's like, why aren't we, you know, looking at parcels like that, especially close to downtown where we're close to a lot of amenities that are.
And I agree. And we need to hopefully start being innovative, not just doing the cookie cutter, but doing something that's innovative that mirrors where in the community in which we're building or we're supporting.
Absolutely. All right, with that, turning it over to my colleagues. Councilmember Jason Winston.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Just wanted to just bring up a couple of points for more clarification.
I've been here almost four years from Chicago. I just want to let you guys know that.
No, no worries. I'm glad that, you know, you've got the expertise to handle these areas. So, you talk about preserving and improving 5,000 units of Atlanta Housing Authority's existing portfolio. What does that look like to Atlanta Housing Authority?
It's a big number, and it's a doable number, and we wouldn't put it down on paper. We couldn't achieve those goals and objectives.
So, is that the rehabbing current existing properties? Is that fixing them up? You know, is that, how is that improving them or preserving them?
Well, the preservation of those units are coming offline. It could be a HUD 221 D3s or D4s, or there's some opportunity that some landlord or some owner wants to sell about 200 units that's in the desirable neighborhood. We'll seize the opportunity to get those units. We have Civic Center that we're getting ready to look at. We have Herndon, which we just got financed over there. We're going to hopefully break ground on Herndon pretty soon. We're going to provide units over there. We have Bowen Homes, Civic Center, Inglewood, and we have a few other smaller developments that we're going to add to the 5,000. So, we think we can do that in the next five years and then look at any other opportunity that we have.
Okay.
In addition to that.
So, producing new affordable units is a little different than preserving affordable housing units?
But they're going to add to the affordability because preserving is make sure that we maintain affordability and also those units who are coming offline, that they don't go into the market rate and so that we can get them and keep them affordable.
Okay.
Anytime we see a potential owner that wants to give up property, hey, I'm selling this property, we want to snatch it up before someone takes it and make it market rate versus affordable.
Okay, so it's more of an acquisition strategy?
So, it's a combination.
Okay, got it. And then, looking at the priority sites, could you kind of delineate the difference between the tiers?
Well, the tier ones, tier twos, and tier threes, we're looking at tier ones, we're going right at it real quickly as I just mentioned, some of those sites. Bowen Homes is not going to take effect probably enough to tier three, but it's going to be in the queue. And so, those are the developments that we know we have financing. All we're doing, we're trying to close the deal. We're trying to finish up our master development agreement so that we can move forward and start producing these units. And they've been in the queue for a couple of years, and based on the COVID and the pandemic and so forth, now we're at the point which we can push them through as we discuss it with our board of commissioners to get that approved.
So, if you had to look at items in tier three or in your portfolio, what's the timeline for activation of those?
We say in the next 18 months.
Okay.
If not sooner.
So, 18 months to even get into tier three?
We're pushing, we're pushing. Now, we're at a point where we get into financing. We got some good news from DCA that they're financing a few of our developments, and so now we pushing them forward.
And then, lastly, I know you say you're from Chicago, but.
No, 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 I just, I came from Chicago.
Oh, I came from Chicago, okay. But there's an old Goodie Mob song, I should say, that talked about fencing in Atlanta. And particularly, it pertained to Atlanta Housing Authority projects back in the nineties. And it said, were these fences put up to keep us in or to keep crime out? And so, I still look at a lot of Housing Authority sites around the City of Atlanta, and I still see fences. And so, I wonder about the inclusivity of seeing those fences around properties, and is that part of the strategy going forward? Because it doesn't seem like that makes those communities really part of the greater community when we put up fences.
I agree with you. It all depends on the, it all depends on the type of development and multifamily that you're trying to achieve. In senior developments and high rises, they like the fences because it's a false sense of security. So, we try to provide that because of the opportunities that people who not, who shouldn't be on the property are on the property, and we have control of people coming in and out of the property. On multifamily units, we don't really support fencing. It all depends, as we talk to the community and what they're asking for, we try to gear ourselves toward what the community is asking for. But we also put in a point where, you know, if it's decorative, if it's security, we need to work on that differently than just saying, because the fence is not going to just provide you security. If it's decorative, if it's not 10 feet high, if it's, you know, smaller, that you're trying to keep dogs from on the property for whatever reasons or trying to stop trash, we look at that, but I'm not a proponent of just fencing in a development. It just takes the stetis away from it. And I don't want to make it like it's a so-called a prison or anything like that, that anyone can come in there at any time and enjoy the circumference of what we're trying to build.
Yeah.
And trying to build more walkways instead of fences.
Yeah, I'm a big proponent of maybe tearing down those fences and making the communities going forward more part of the greater community. So, just wanted to just point that out.
I appreciate that.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Winston, and your cell therapy call. I appreciate it. Councilmember Liliana Bakhtiari.
I was going to say, I don't know how to follow Goodie Mob, but I'll try. Thank you for the presentation. I wanted to, I have a couple of questions, just kind of elaborating or hoping to dig in on some of the bullet points. The first one was on the goal, goal two, there are bullet points, 2D, the piece on providing 1,400 new families with homeownership opportunities for wealth building. How does Atlanta Housing intend, I mean, it's an amazing goal. How do y'all intend to see that through?
We have a homeownership program on the housing choice voucher side and also on the public housing side. Public housing side is FSS and Section 8. Housing Choice Voucher is a homeownership program. So, we have already so many people in the queue, and so they're going through the process, credit, repair, job opportunities. So, we match what we're doing, what they have out there as an opportunity. We put them in a home. The city provides a second mortgage. We work with Invest Atlanta, and so we push this program and getting our folks off the program. But also, it's the aftermath. Just because we put them in a home, we have to sit there and still monitor and make sure that they're maintaining and they're not, because of a lost job, how do we get them back into the job market?
Through the credit scores?
So, they can maintain that mortgage, pardon me?
Assistance with the credit score piece. I mean, the biggest issue I definitely have is families, especially Black families, talking to me about homeownership and the inability to do so, given credit score issues or debt issues. So, yeah.
We're very proud of our homeownership program, and we master to, something I'm going to share with you that's going to come along online. We're getting ready to build specifically five units, five homes on the west side, and we're going to look and see how we can challenge the market about building more affordable housing if it's congregated, container homes or modular homes. We're going to see if we can do a better job and bring the cost. But those five units that we're getting ready to build are going to be just for homeownership.
Okay. And then, the piece, I believe you all said, I believe you said in the presentation about $2 million to help with energy, offsetting energy issues. And so, I would love for you to elaborate on that because one of my biggest things I've been working on is energy burden, which before taking this role, I mean, I had a familiar concept, I had a familiar idea of, but not yet. I did not realize that it was our leading cause of displacement until I started on council, like how bad it was. I believe right now, its leading cause of displacement, and I believe right now to offset all energy burden costs in Atlanta is approximately $400 million, which obviously, not expecting Atlanta Housing to pay for, but would love to learn more about how the 2 million being raised and how you're offsetting the, and elaboration on the carbon footprint piece.
We're probably going to be assisted by Southface, who is on our Civic Center property. That's probably going to be the, what would I like to say in that word? It's going to be a model for what we do subsequent when we build new affordable housing, new multifamily housing. We're going to get their energy and their expertise on how we can redesign something that provides more energy efficiency in our developments going forward. We haven't done, we haven't done that. We got the collaboration with Southface, so Civic Center is probably going to be our pilot, is going to be our model. And then, we're going to look at all the other developments. If we get the Choice Neighborhoods for Bowen, we're going to look at Inglewood, and we're also going to look at other properties to provide energy efficiency and work with Georgia Power.
And if you could, I had two questions around the Year of the Youth piece. One, happy to hear that y'all are supporting it. to hear that y'all are supporting it. I'm curious as to how, obviously, the city's getting creative because we can affect health and education. So would love to know how Atlanta Housing is supporting Year of the Youth, and also wanted to know where the core youth programs take place.
Let's say it again, the first one about the youth programs?
How you are intending on supporting Year of the Youth?
Well, we getting ready to put a plan together. We submitting to the mayor about how we're going to support the Year of the Youth, looking at programs, our resources, our dollars, specifically for our youth, and trying to get them employed with an internship program, but also the opportunities to work on our sites. And some of those sites to provide some type of, it could be lawn cutting, painting, it could be various other things to provide some training in this city. And also looking at some of the youth programs already in existence, Boys and Girls Club, and some other supportive services to send them over there and support our youth. Based on what the, what the city's doing, is just to add on to that, not trying to develop new programs, but to enhance their programs.
Okay. And in terms of, well, one, I also wanted to say, take a moment to say thank you to Atlanta Housing, to you and Ms. Terry Lee about the Housing Voucher Program, which has now been officially adopted so far by Invest and Beltline. And also a big thank you to Councilmember Dozier, who sits on both of those boards and helps steer those through, which is a very big deal. So in terms of the dashboard, as these new Section 8 opportunities come online, as we see Invest in Atlanta Housing, the city, and Beltline taking that leap, and hopefully Fulton County Development Authority and MARTA will be joining us soon, will that, I wanted to make sure about the opportunities to, the educational opportunities that will be available to let folks know that this is now going to be a requirement with those dollars. And are they going to be, will those properties now be put on the dashboard?
They'll be on the dashboard. That'll be, I have to commend my staff for putting that on. Once we did a presentation to the cabinet, the mayor was just really impressed about that dashboard. And so we'll, we'll be updating it and making sure that we continue tracking what we're supposed to be doing on that dashboard, especially as it relates to this strategic plan. Absolutely.
Okay. And I have three more questions. You go on to the next one, so I apologize. But the affordable housing piece, Atlanta Housing is also utilizing the AMI formula, correct? Is there any way to shift to salary base? Because I do not know, or at least a neighborhood AMI program, because I do not know how we're going to continue building in the city. I know how you can build affordable housing in my district, or Councilmember Lewis' district, or Councilmember Dozier's district, and have it be affordable when Buckhead and other high, and high income areas are factored into that formula. Because right now, workforce housing in my district is $1,700 for a one-bedroom, one-bath unit. And to me, that's not workforce. So curious as to how we can offset that.
The sad thing about that, Councilwoman, is that we don't dictate that. That's HUD, US Department of Housing and Urban Development. They, they come up with those numbers. Now, do I agree with them? No. Do I agree with the definition of what affordable is? No, I don't. But I can't change it. I'm only going by the rules in which US Department of Housing and Urban Development creates, and also the fair market rents is another thing that we have no control over. We can make our input, but ultimately, they make those, those decisions by the economists that work for, for the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. They ask us questions, we provide information, but it's just a hit and miss. And so, yes, we, we encourage them to look at it. We encourage providing our input, but they ultimately have that. We don't have anything to do with it. I wish we did.
Thank you. Something to think of in terms of innovation and how we get around some of those issues. The other piece, there's two more questions specific to my district I would like to ask you about. One, we have some, I believe that Atlanta Housing owns some of our now blighted buildings on Edgewood and Auburn. And as you know, that district has experienced, that area has experienced serious neglect. And I would love to work with Atlanta Housing if there's interest in trying to turn around those buildings. This is something the community can become engaged in or to build community housing, because we have such an issue with homelessness, with addiction, with a lack of resources in that community. So I would love to talk to Atlanta Housing about taking some of those properties offline or trying to do something that is more community oriented.
I am looking at the opportunity to provide or put some satellite offices in these neighborhoods. And then maybe we can do a two for putting the satellite offices and maybe rehabbing or redoing some homes over there that makes sense, to make sure that we're inundating to the community and getting that word out, so that they know what's going on at Atlanta Housing. So I may be interested in that.
Don't worry. I will, I will send you an email before end of day.
Okay.
And the other piece was, obviously, we had, we have the ongoing conversation about supportive housing in neighborhoods, especially neighborhoods that are becoming increasingly affluent. And I would love to get Atlanta Housing's perspective on what, on where you stand on what occurred in my district with the supportive housing project that was being proposed for Reynolds Town on Kirkwood Road. Obviously, the neighborhood voted against it. That has a long history of a lack of trust between the community and the developer. I believe there's a path forward there, but it's going to take some more work. So I'd like to know where Atlanta Housing's standing.
Yeah, we're still going to go forward with this, with this, we're still going to go forward. I think it's the right thing to do. I think we need to do some more energy, some more work with the community. I know one of the issues is that increased parking. We need to take a look at that. We want to make sure that the numbers are correct. Invest Atlanta and I and our organization, we still need to talk about and discuss it because they have not approved it, nor has my board approved it. So there's work to do. And so we're going to sit there and look at that. And we're going to come up with a, hopefully a better solution to move forward.
Well, just so that I'm a resource and I would love to help you meet with the community, obviously, there's a long, too long of a history there for me to sit here and obviously tell you this now. But I want to be a resource to find a way to mediate so the neighborhood gets their concerns addressed.
Well, thank you.
While we also have, I think there is a path forward, and that's what I'm hoping. But please allow me to introduce you to the community so they can express their concerns to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilmember Baxiari, Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you so much for coming today. I was extremely impressed by your presentation, particularly the youth portion. The, I didn't know much about it. So I even liked the part where you said that right now, your goal is to spread the word and market more of what you're doing in the district. So my question is very specific. But the first one is, where are we on low-income housing?
Well, we don't call it low-income housing anymore, Councilwoman. We call it affordable housing.
Affordable housing, as you see, we just talked about it, it's not really affordable.
Right.
So I think we, low-income housing is still a term that's defined in the dictionary defined. We still have it in the city.
But it's a bad stereotype, because once you say I live in low income, then people who, who so claim don't live in low income think that you're, you don't want to work, you using a dime off the government, you don't want to do anything, you don't want to be prosperous or anything like, any of those types of positive things that, and that's not what low income is all about. The stereotype has been like that for years. And we're trying to overcome that. Instead of calling projects, we call them developments. We don't call them low income. We call them affordable. And it's always a question what affordable really is.
Yeah. So I think in Atlanta, I know you're from Chicago, in Atlanta.
No, just, just came from there. I wasn't born and raised there.
Where you from?
I'm from outside Detroit, Michigan.
So Atlanta, we, we never looked down on folks. My folks grew up in Poole Creek, so we never said, never looked at low income like projects. As a matter of fact, Herndon Homes is known as one of the first, if not the first, project in America, right? And so that was us.
Really, Techwood.
Techwood. Make sure I say it right. Man, I'm glad you, Mr. Herndon is the person who did it, right? Well, so Techwood was. So that was Atlanta showing the world how to do, how to take care of folks.
And you guys did.
Yeah.
No doubt about it.
I think that Atlanta, we showed you that we can do it. So we never looked at low-income housing the way the folks in Detroit or folks in Chicago or New York, other cities did. Because we did it first, and we showed you how to do it, and you looked at it a little differently. And so that's why I use the term low-income still, because folks don't look at it a little differently. When, so my question is, where are we on not affordable, where a person is the zip code? Because I know in our district, when we talk about doing affordable housing, we tell you to do it by the zip code. So area median by the zip code so we can make it a little bit cheaper, so you don't have to
Sure.
include folks in Buckhead. So that's one way that Councilmember Baxiari could decrease it, right?
Right.
So Councilman, I know you didn't mention that as an option for her.
Yes, that's always an option.
Okay. So Councilmember Baxiari, one option is to change it by your zip code. And so when they do affordable, when they use that term affordable housing, if they do it by the zip code, that excludes folks from zip codes that aren't in our zip code, which makes it a little bit cheaper, which, I mean, more affordable, which is what we've been trying to do in our district since we got elected. And so where are we on, once again, when I'm looking at this, at the priority sites, and I see that around the Beltline, everything's tier one, except two things, which are tier two, and that's North Avenue and Palmer House. But in my district, I see Jonesboro South, North, and Gilbert Gardens, which were torn down. Gilbert Gardens has been gone longer than Thomasville. And so Lila Valley, when I'm looking at it, I'm thinking about the low-income housing that was in Lila Valley and in Thomasville, I mean, and in Gilbert Garden. My dad, growing up in Lila Valley, my grandmother, growing up in Gilbert Gardens. So I spent time in both of them. In my lifetime, I shorted 35 years. And I'm wondering, where are we at bringing back those two properties? And how can we fast-forward it while the community still looks the same? Because looking at this, you know, I don't know another way to say it, but some of these communities have been gentrified in a way, they've already, they're ready, they're ripe for the taking. So I'm wondering, how can we put that same type of investment in communities that have not had that same type of investment traditionally? Because I think that would bring a different copper resource to folks who've been living there for about 40 years, like myself.
That's, that's a great question, Councilman. Let me just respond to that off the top of my head. All of our communities need some assistance, and especially those who have not been addressed by Atlanta Housing. But we can't address them all, but we're going to contribute to trying to help us all. I think the mayor's strike force is going to look at your areas and other areas in this city to make parity, because it seems like we all want to go over here and we should be going over to these other places. One of the things I'm a strong opponent, opponent of is gentrification. It seems like we always want to take our money somewhere else instead of in that particular neighborhood to get them viable like they used to be. And so we're going to start looking at that also. And we're not trying to look at big parcels. We're trying to look at parcels that can improve that neighborhood, looking at what they have, the positive things, and also add to the growth of those communities. Because once Atlanta Housing and Invest Atlanta start investing in these neighborhoods, then everyone else comes. And so when we think that there's an opportunity here, based on what we do, our market study, how we make those decisions based on our board of commissioners, we go and we take a look at it, and then we, we make our opportunities known also to those funders and, and banking institutions. So yes, it's all open.
And I think the one I'm focused most on are Jonesboro North, Lila Valley, and which is in his district, but will be coming, because of redistricting to me, and Gilbert Gardens. Because, and Jonesboro South, if you look around Jonesboro South right now, they have $400,000 houses, right? So we ain't concerned with will people move here. I live right down the street. A golf course is behind it. It's five minutes from the airport, five minutes, seven minutes from downtown, seven minutes from the airport, Gilbert Gardens. So these are resource, these are places that are surrounded by every resource that the city has to give. And so I'm wondering, how can we bring back workforce or low-income housing to areas that it already was? Every property on this site priority, when I'm talking to Councilmember Winston, we talked about how Inglewood, 10,000 people, right? There was 10,000 black folk used to live right there. And we know it's coming back. We know what price is going to come back at. And so I'm just trying to see if I can reroute y'all and see, because I know we spending city funding right now. And all of my, everything in my district is tier three. Everything. So can we boost one of them up?
So this is why I promise you, Councilman, I'll go back to my staff and I'll take a look at that tier three and see if we can bump that up and what reasons, what reasons can we not give you that we cannot do that? And then see if we can, see if we can support some of those things in your, in your ward.
But I would want it to be workforce housing for City of Atlanta workers or for income, because I've spoke, I've reached out to folks that live in the community. They're okay with mixed income communities, meaning that they got affordable, they got rich folks, and they're okay with having low income come back so that we can have these beautiful communities that Atlanta used to have, which were really mixed, and which Dr. King, who was a wealthy person, used to live across the street from some projects. And they were able to actually influence that project a little different.
Well, if you were a sister, I ask you this, Councilman, let's have a community meeting, and let's hear from the community, and let's go the distance so that we can respond to the community about your district, your ward, and so that we can do some things.
Okay. And now I'll get to some more specific questions. Goal one, see, 3,000, 3,500 households living in amenity-rich transit community neighborhoods. So how are you choosing those? Because I know Oakland City, I don't see it on here. I know Oakland City train station and Lakewood train station are both in my district. And I've been seeing some of the, that's also sitting in the middle of Atlanta. It's in, like, literally prime location on the Atlanta Beltline. And I know we have some housing that's around that's dilapidated, that looks certain ways right now. How are we actually investing in that area, in city-owned properties?
I will have to give you some information on that, Councilman, and give you some specifics. I don't have them off the top of my head right now, but I will respond to you and I'll give you a written response.
And lastly, is, is Atlanta housing even looking at low income like we used to and workforce for folks that make, because the minimum wage in the state of Georgia is $7, $7, or $5.15. City of Atlanta, we have $15. Are we looking at workforce housing for folks that make between the state minimum wage and the city minimum wage?
All of our new developments that we got going on right now, are we only looking at workforce housing, each one of those mixed income developments. So that's a part, a part of the redevelopment of these, of these sites. Like Bowen Homes, if we get that choice neighborhood, and Inglewood is going to be workforce housing, going to be a certain percentage in that mixed income development that's going to be specifically for workforce housing, which, which hopefully is going to be approved by our board of commissioners. But that is the right thing that we're going to do, and that's what we're going to focus on, is workforce housing. Because you have that niche in the market that's not being addressed. We want to address that.
I would say we on the same page. The Atlanta Housing Authority was built to take care of Techwood and communities like Techwood. We just want to see communities coming back like Techwood. I love Carver Homes. I love Mechanicsville. We did it right. I see, I see us do it right in Mechanicsville. I seen us do it right in Carver Home, but we stopped. We continue to tear down apartments, continue to tear down apartments where 10,000 people live, but we just stopped all of a sudden. So I want to see some more Carver Homes coming forward.
So give us another five years, and we're going to start gearing up. And we're going to be inviting you to those groundbreaking ceremonies so that you'll see the fruits of that labor. And to get back to your point about workforce housing, low-income housing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Councilmember Waits.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your presentation this afternoon. And I would love it if you could give me the appropriate contact for the questions that I have. I have received several emails and phone calls from residents who live in properties that I guess that are managed by the Atlanta Housing Authority. And the reason why these calls are so troubling is because it's been consistent. And some of the complaints were, if they complained about mold or just simple repairs to a heating and air facility, that that would be the threat of possible eviction or losing access to the property. Some have said that there is a desire to organize community meetings. I guess during COVID, some of these stopped. And for those ones who were vocal, they were perceived as troublemakers. The other piece is management being non-responsive, again, regarding simple repairs, some even being unprofessional and speaking in a rude tone. So I'm curious as to your management team, you know, what type of training do they undergo to manage specifically these larger properties? And the other piece is the use of amenities. Some understanding that, I guess with COVID, that the community room or access to the community room at some point was closed, even access to the various amenities. And again, threats for complaining, the threat of eviction. Finally, process, when it comes to complaints, how do you handle complaints from tenants, constituents surrounding AHA properties? And what is the repair process? So if you submit a ticket for your heating and not working for a period of time, how do you track that process? And can I get a list of all the complaints that you have received at the property? And what is your turnaround time to make that happen? And finally, a contact that I can speak with or visit some of these properties that are problematic?
So let me make sure that we're on the same page, Councilwoman. First of all, we don't own all that property that people are complaining about. We have a RAB program, which is Rental Assistance Demonstration Program, which we converted from public housing to Section 8. We don't own the property anymore. We own the land, but we don't own the property. If anyone calls and they have an issue with some of the issues, some of the complaints that they have, they can call our office, and we can call the management and say, here's an issue you need to address. And typically, they're addressed. There's always two sides of the story, Councilwoman, because some of the things that they do say are not true, but most of the things that they do tell us that they say. They call me, and I respond to them within that hour or whatever, whatever the means mechanism is. No one can be evicted unless I give that okay, especially on our other developments that we do not own. That also comes through us. And we work with our property management, our contract property management firms, and we resolve those issues. Some of those issues are, all the time, they come the same thing. We go in there, repair the units, and they are still complaining, and we still address them. If there's any mold issues, we eradicate that. We move residents out of the unit, we put them in a hotel. So we're intimately involved in each one of those complaints. Now, not all of them are satisfied, to the extent that they want to be satisfied, but they're all addressed. And they all call me because they have my cellphone. And I also go out there to those properties and do inspections. I talk to the residents, whenever wants to talk to me, and we talk about some of the, some of the issues that are going on. some of the issues that are going on. I will send you a person that you can call, that you can get some additional information. But typically they call me and I address them quick, fast, and in a hurry. But all those issues that you have mentioned, I hear those all the time. They call me, I get emails every day, I respond to them, and then I also follow up with them. But I will give you contact information, I'll send that information to you.
Okay, great.
Typically it's me.
Okay, perfect. I'd love to chat further offline.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Waits. Councilmember Wes Morland.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Mr. Jones. Appreciate your presentation. I'm going to try and just ask two overarching questions, but there are a couple of specific data points kind of woven into the first question. On slide six, when we talk about increasing the designation of sustainability certified units to thirty-three percent, and then Councilmember Bakhtiari asked about fourteen hundred new families for homeownership opportunities, the thirty-five hundred that Councilmember Lewis asked about being near amenity-rich areas, and then this two million dollars for energy efficiency and the half a million for new annual funding. Can you talk a little bit about how the board and your team reached each of those numbers? Right? So if, if the goal is to get to thirty-three percent for sustainably certified units, where are we now and how do we settle on thirty-three percent versus any other number?
Just looking at our legacies and looking at our history, about what we've done in the last five years, looking at the last five-year strategic plan and looking at those numbers and see if we need a decrease or increase to make sure that we're in the twenty-first century and that we're addressing those key components. We talked with the mayor's staff, we talked to stakeholders, we also talked to US Department Housing and Development, and we put these numbers together and we had almost a whole year in which to put the strategic plan together. Again, we had to wait because we had a change in leadership and our commissioners, we have four new commissioners, so we had to postpone that. So we had to relook at our numbers, looking at our MTW commitment, our moving the work commitment, and put the best numbers that we can put together and so substantiate each one of those numbers that are, are they achievable and are they obtainable? And we, we did our due diligence.
And then my second question goes back to what Councilmember Lewis asked about, which I think is like arguably the most important question all of us are asking, which is, is the North Star here to build as many units as possible? Going back to the acreage density conversation that you and Councilmember Dozier had last November, like is the North Star to build as many units as possible at as deeply affordable AMI as possible?
I'm trying to build them affordable, as deeply as AMI that we can possibly. You know, when people say that if you get, if you're looking at sixty to eighty percent AMI, that's not going to do it.
Right.
Teacher can't afford it, a police officer can't afford it. And again, I've always said that, I mean affordability means different things to different people. And if we don't sit there and try to do, do, if we don't sit there and look at the, be the housing authority that we're looking at, you know, between thirty, maybe lower than thirty percent to get to the, to get to the crux of things, it's never going to be there. No one's going to believe in us. And that's what we have to build too. Of course, it's financing, that's why we have to raise funding, that's how we look at collaborative partnerships around this country. Hopefully HUD and the appropriations bill, that they'll give us more money so we do more things. But we do a good product, once we get the chance to do that product, but we're looking at the opportunity in which to make these deep subsidies, especially when it comes to mixed income developers in these great neighborhoods that have greater amenities with better schools, better neighborhoods, and less crime. So yes, absolutely.
Quick follow-up question. If the, I suspect everybody up here also shares the goal of building as many units as possible for as deeply affordable AMI levels as possible. That led to a conversation last November around the chart that we looked at that had two thousand units at eighty percent AMI and below out of forty-eight hundred units total that were contemplated on the projects that were discussed back then. If we just take one of these tier one projects, right? The thing, the, the projects that are most, that are coming off the, the runway next, whether it's Civic Center or Bowen or pick any of them, like, can we start now and then have a deeper conversation about, you know, we talked a little bit last time about the Civic Center AMI percentages just being, you know, not nearly deep enough? And the only answer to that is subsidy from somebody. And so in these tier one projects, there's a hundred and seventy-seven acres that is like coming, like where is the conversation, is the conversation happening either with the strike force or with your board about the subsidy needed to drive those AMI levels as low as possible? And if it's not, how can we start it? And if it is, what are the numbers that we're literally talking about that we need to hit?
Well, we've started those conversations in the past, and now we continue to have those conversations, doing deep subsidy. The question is that we have to have a balancing act because this is a financing issue, how many we can build, how, you know, what the developer can do and what, what developer can or cannot do. And so we're, we're having those conversations. We've been tasked by the Board of Commissioners to make these little, make these units more deeply subsidized, and we're looking at our numbers again. Well, we don't want to, I don't, I don't want to sit here and say that, yeah, I'm going to make a promise. I can't make a promise. It's the number of units that we can, that we can balance it out. Instead of having a third, a third, a third, what makes sense based on the, the resource that we have, that we can not, it's not going to be all public housing, it's not going to be all Section 8. It's got to be a combination, but what's the best medium in here that we can accomplish what we can accomplish? I don't want to say that we're going to build two thousand units and because we want to do deep subsidy, we can only do three hundred units instead of the six hundred units. So that's what we're trying to do. And, and again, we have a master development agreement that we have to do with each one of the developers. We're also looking at the task instead, instead of doing the minimal, how can we do the maximum? How can we do more than, if we've already agreed to do X amount for affordable housing, how can we add to that and have some of these deeply subsidized units so that we have some promise that people can move into our units? And, and not saying that, hey, we can't move in these units, you know, we just can't. It's not what it's supposed to be. Sixty, eighty percent AMI looks attractive, but it doesn't do it for the City of Atlanta. They'll never get in there. But I understand, I understand all your concerns, it's, it's the same, not just in Atlanta but across the country. But we're trying to do a better job of what we mix and match in trying to provide some deep subsidy for all these units. And we've been tasked by the commissioners, our board of commissioners all the time.
Last question. And it's a question that we'll have to ask ourselves over the next couple of months as we talk about our own budget and having the largest reserves the city's ever had. MARTA would do well to ask itself the same question with its seven hundred million dollar reserves. What is AH's current reserve amount and what is your philosophy on the use of those dollars?
That's a good question, but don't quote me. I think our reserves, we, we have to have a reserves of at least three months of our operating. And I think, and don't quote me, I think it's about a hundred and thirty-three million. And so we can use that hundred and thirty-three million, we got to use it quickly to acquire or preserve units out, out, outside of Atlanta. If we don't do this, we don't look at this, we're looking at the possibility of Congress reallocating those resources, taking them back from housing authorities across the country because they're there. Now, we're supposed to have them there because of emergencies. If Congress doesn't pass a bill to continue the, 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 continue to operate government, that means that we have to take our reserves, we have to use them until the government is fully funded. And so that's our, 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 our gauge, and so we don't try to make that less than what it is.
The one thirty-three figure is?
Off the top of my head.
Yeah, I understand, I'm not going to quote you. But it, that's what you have to have in reserves or what we currently have and?
That's what we have to have in reserves. Anything above that, we have an opportunity to buy and acquire. So I know at least we have that.
What's your best guess on where we are at?
I think we have probably between, probably fifty to sixty million dollars above that.
Above that? Okay. Thank you.
Hey, Councilmember Wes Morland, Councilmember Lewis.
How, how much of the money is, uh, thank you, is eligible to be lost? You, you mentioned that if you don't spend a certain amount?
All of it can be lost.
If what happens?
If Congress or the appropriators want to take back all the reserves, it can be all lost.
Can you help me, anybody understand?
So let me, let me, let me just explain to you.
So I was making sure, no one up here understands that. I was making sure that nobody understood that before I re-answered. Because we, and I'll, I'll put you in the mind frame that I am at and probably some of us, we just saw ten million dollars go back to the federal government for something. Is it similar to use it or lose it?
That's a grant program. That's quite different from what we do, what we're talking about. That's a grant program. If you're going to use the grant money in a certain period of time, they'll snatch it back. What I'm saying is that every housing authority across the country, thirty-three hundred, have to have at least three months of operating reserves, based on what their operating reserves is on a, on a monthly or, or yearly basis. Those thirty-three hundred, probably about twenty-nine hundred of them, probably more than that, don't have adequate reserves. So if the, if the federal government closes down and you got to pay salaries, you got to pay landlords, you got, they won't be able to do it. So that's why they, and I'm not saying it's a HUD problem, it's an issue across the country. We're fortunate to keep those reserves here because we run our operations like we're supposed to do. And we keeping, we keeping landlords paid, we keeping our, our properties maintained, and it's based on rental income. We, we do a good job. And so that's what I was saying now, any of those reserves, any, any of the money that's above those, those three months of operating, operating reserves, right now, Congress is looking at trying to recapture all the, all that, all the extra funding to be used for other government entities like US Department of Defense, Treasury, HHS. And so that's what we're trying to keep, based on our trade organization, they're talking to the appropriators, says we need to maintain those reserves because we need to do X, Y, Z. We need to keep our bills maintained. You can't take away our funding because if you look at some of our capital improvements, we don't have the capital dollars like we used to many years ago. And so that's the crust that we are going in all, all the time.
I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little closer to it now. So you're saying if we don't, if the federal government sees that we have fifty to sixty million more than what we need, they're willing, they may come take the one thirty-three?
No, just the fifty to sixty million dollars.
So we need to spend that fifty to sixty million dollars?
That's correct. And so that's all queued into the developments that we have to do, like, like Inglewood, maybe Thomasville, maybe Civic Center, and so all that money is being committed.
I'm going to bring you where I'm at, because you talking about the stuff that ain't in my district. I'm going to bring you to Pool Creek, Jonesboro South, Jonesboro North, stuff that's not in the green. Because I'm assuming some of the stuff that's in the green, we already got the money for it, it's on the go, right? So we got, now, I don't know if we, even though we was having this conversation today, now we just found out we got fifty to sixty million dollars, we got to spend.
Councilman, remember, I was off the top of my head. I, I'm just going to say that one more time.
But I believe you.
It's on the top of my head, so I'm not sure.
But I believe you. So I'm, I'm taking what's coming off the top of your head, between fifty and sixty million dollars that we got to spend, or we going to get the same letters that we got when they came down here and say, we just let ten million dollars go back to the federal government? And so now, I'm hoping that Lila Valley, Jonesboro South, Jonesboro North, and Gilbert Gardens, stuff that we ain't even had a meeting about. So I, I know we ain't even started talking about it.
Sure.
I'm hoping that we can move that stuff up on the list and get that done with that fifty or sixty million dollars, because I seen Atlanta do Techwood. And so America seen Atlanta do Techwood, then America copied Techwood. I think Atlanta gets to make an example with fifty to sixty million dollars according to you on how to do Gilbert Gardens, Jonesboro North, Jonesboro South, and Lila Valley. And so that's what I'm encouraged by. I, I don't think that we can actually, because of all the upfront money we got, we don't need them, and we can get back to low income and workforce housing where people from Atlanta who work in this city make between five fifteen and that fifteen dollar amount that the city pays can afford to live here again.
But, but let me put an explanation point on there. HUD allows us only to do a, a, a certain amount of money on a development. But our issue is, is infrastructure. We cannot use our operating reserves for infrastructure. That's been the biggest problem. That's why mostly the developments haven't gone forward because of the infrastructure. We're talking about streets, sanitary, we're talking about.
Are we good on that part in Atlanta? Uh, you've been coming to our meetings, you keep hearing, we got the most money we've ever had in the history of our city.
I'm just making that point.
Oh, we feel good. I think our job is to provide public services. You just told us about fifty to sixty million dollars that we can provide affordable workforce housing and low income housing for, and I think that we just passed the largest infrastructure bill in American history, right? And so we're going to have to go up there and find some of that money and use it right. But man, I'm, I'm so encouraged. This is one of my best meetings I've had. I, 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 I let go after this, Chair.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Any other comments or questions from colleagues? See, and thank you so much, Mr. Jones, I appreciate you.
And Councilman, we'll get, we'll get together, okay?
I'll tell you, none of us knew we had fifty to sixty million dollars to play with before you came in here.
Not to play with, something to do with.
Something, something to, uh, do, do, to, to do it right for. Uh, we get fifty to sixty million dollars to do it right. Myself and Liliana Bakhtiari, we over here licking our chops right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank both of you. All right, Christopher Norman, please come on up. Uh, just for the public, we have Christopher Norman, the Executive Director of the Metro Atlanta Land Bank Authority with his annual report. Good to see you, sir.
Good to see you as well. Thanks for having me. It's been about a year and a day, I think, since, since I was last here before the, for the committee. So it's always a good chance to come back and kind of bring you up to speed on what we've been up to during that period of time. So want to kind of walk you through just kind of a full, kind of a three sixty overview of what, what has the land bank been up to over this, this year and kind of give you a sense of kind of where we're, we're leading. So we just go to the, to the next slide. So really just want to kind of topically go through a few things, you know, speak to you about, so what are the, what's the portfolio look like? What people, what do we have? And then also speak about some of the transactional things we've done as well as the operational, and then talk about some other elements of that. So, so first thing, jump into the portfolio. So, so basically property exists in the land bank three, primarily three different ways. We have fee simple property that's under control of the land bank, which means we own it unimpeded outright. We also have a land banking depository program that we created where we hold property for partners, such as nonprofits and some of the city subsidiaries as well. And then also, you're familiar with the demolition lien abatement project that we're also undergoing, and those properties come to the land bank as well, and they're held until they're put back and forth to productive use. Right now, based on the tax assessor, we've kind of estimated it's about, you know, almost about thirteen point six million dollars worth of value in those properties. So it's a fairly, a sizable chunk of real estate that's managed by, by the land bank. How's it partition? You, this chart shows you kind of how it's broken down, so the land bank includes those things. I talked about the stuff we own outright, as well as some of the properties under the demolition lien program. And then these are some of the parties we land bank property with, well, they land bank property with us. With our future fund, Police Foundation, you see Invest Atlanta, we actually manage their properties that they, they hold. Then also A and D B has a few properties with us. And so land banking, just kind of give you a sense, what does that mean? When we bank for other people, we give them a period of time, which we say, you can hold property with the land bank for up to five years. In that period of time, we have expectations for you to get your financing together, your development plans together, all these other types of things, in exchange for producing a certain type of product, which gets back to the affordability we've been talking about. So it's not just to bank property just for the sake of doing it. We expect to have some type of outcome when we release the property to them. And we put strings on them, which include ability to even bring that, snatch that property back if they don't do what they've done. So, so just want to kind of give you a sense of, of where we stand with the portfolio. And doing this also, clearly one thing we want to do is be good partners in the community, so we maintain our property regularly, twice a week, I mean twice a month, twice a week would be outstanding, but twice, twice a month. And it shows you that, you know, it takes, takes money to do this. So we spent almost a hundred and seventy thousand dollars just on property maintenance over the last twelve months. There's almost seven hundred and fifty service acts that performed of that. And of course, since we're not the city and we're not the county, we have private insurance. And of course, since we're not the city, and we're not the county, we have private insurance. So we do have private insurance on our property that we hold as well. So it just kind of gives us a sense of like scale of the portfolio we currently work with. So let's translate this into transactions. What does this mean? This one project right here, Conley Road, just want to chat with you about this one. This is one that's been ongoing for a while, but it's an example of things we need to get involved in. This came to us a while back, and we extinguished some delinquent taxes on this project, in exchange for a developer that time who was going to convert it. It was in bad shape, they were going to bring it back online. That kind of lingered for a while. And frankly, it went a long further than it should have, but basically after they failed to complete the project, we were able to, it actually deteriorated into bad shape, where they had a, there were a couple murders on the property, there was like, you know, mold and all this other kind of stuff, it was barely occupied. So we basically had legal requirements in our development agreement with them. So when extinguished taxes for a party, we actually entered development agreements. So we say, we give you this benefit, we expect something from you. And one of the things was, we had a reverter right, which meant, we had the right to revert that title of that property away from you to us. And so we waved at them and said, well, guess what? If you don't finish your development, or sell it to somebody else, we will just take this property back, and you lose all your investment. So therefore, they found another developer, Falcon Georgia Investments, is a subsidiary out of a group out of New Jersey, they came in, and they've been working on that. This is four hundred and forty units of housing that they're basically working on, it's all privately funded. Splitting basically was three developments, they pushed into one, kind of give you a sense of this before, this is kind of what it looked like before. You can see, you know, you can see this in bad repair and all this. And so over the years, they've, now they're working on it, they finished half of it. So this is now what it looks like. We got these pictures when we did a site visit, you can see now we have landscape, and you have all this other kind of stuff. This is the south portion. The northern portion, they expect to be done coming up towards the end of this year. So this is an example, again, of how we can use public-private partnerships and some of the tools we have to get some of these properties back online. And so this is exciting, to have this hopefully completely done by the end of the year. They were, they fell victim to the COVID and the supply chain, I think at one point, it was taking them a year just to get appliances and stuff delivered for a project this big. But a lot of that's kind of has eased out now. So that's just an example of that. Permanent affordability pilot. This is something we did, everybody's been talking about, how do you have long-term affordability? You know, go past the one turn. And so the Atlanta Land Trust, the community land trust model itself, basically by design is for long-term affordability. And so we came up with a permanent pricing model. So anybody who wants to do community land trust property, basically, the maximum will allow you, the maximum price will be thirty-five percent of the market value for these properties we may hold, if that is your model. So right now, Atlanta Land Trust is the most robust model doing that, and so we entered into an MOU with them. We designated fourteen properties around the Beltline footprint for them to basically work on. We decided that twenty-five percent would be their threshold. So to date, they've actually delivered one unit, Eugenia, they sold it for a hundred thousand dollars, and that's in the Grove Park neighborhood, which is phenomenal for that area. And that was an interesting journey for that property. We actually got that property from the United States Attorney via money laundering case that they seized the property and gave it to us. And so we've turned it into a life for new property. Since then, they've actually picked up five additional properties, and three are set to close this week, both in the next couple of weeks, so that brings them up to eight. So these are fourteen properties that they've, we've identified for Atlanta Land Trust. Unfortunately, three of them are in the west side, and they're part of the EPA West Side Cleanup Project that you may have heard of, with the slag that they're working through. So those are, those unfortunately, it might be a year or two before those get ready, but those will be also designated for the land trust. That gives you a sense of that. Abatement project. This is where, of course, the portfolio of liens that exist on the books, the city is foreclosed on those, as those get foreclosed on, they come into the possession of the land bank. And so these properties have come in, we've actually, since they were delinquent, derelict, a lot of them sitting there, some of them haven't paid taxes, in addition to not having been redeveloped. So we've actually already extinguished one-point-one million dollars of delinquent taxes on these properties, because that's one of the powers of the land bank. And I do point out that the consent of the school board is required to do that action, so we have received that as well, so we're all working together on this. And so those are primarily multifamilies. All the multifamilies will be, and let me explain the one-fifty-one, sounds like a big number, but what a lot of people did back in the, several years ago, they took apartment complexes and turned them into condos, and then they sold individual units. And so they basically take, took one parcel, and now they split it into maybe twenty or thirty. So what the legal team is having to do is basically knit all this stuff back together. And so it sounds like, so the footprint may, you may have thirty parcels on a former apartment complex, and so, so when you think about the one-fifty, it represents about seven apartment complexes. So now we're about to go into phase two, which is going to be more single-family properties. And so our attorneys have been, a team has been engaged with the Atlanta Law Department to work on those for us. And then hopefully, as those come to fruition, we're going to issue an RFQ to identify developers, to basically put those, basically it's just land, turn those parcels into properties, and hopefully, our target is the end of this year, third or fourth quarter of this year for that. The Fulton County District Attorney, I've mentioned the U.S. Attorney, we've also had conversations with the District Attorney about properties they bring into possession. They brought a property on a seven-thirty deal that was forfeited, it was a drug house. We are now working with the Atlanta Police Foundation to turn that into a police officer housing. And so we have done that with them before, in several other occasions. And so again, this is just an example of how we work with different agencies to find opportunities to bring housing to the forefront. Westside Future Fund, I think we're all familiar with that organization. We just entered into an arrangement with them for a five-year land banking agreement. They've just transferred about thirty-three properties over to us. Those will be held for up to five years, while they basically do their process of turning those into active units, and that's a combination of single-family, multifamily. So that's ongoing right now. One thing about this, we made an agreement that they will allow them to continue to maintain their own property while we own it. But they also, they keep us in the loop in terms of everything that's happening on our properties, because they're basically keeping it in good order. So that's another partnership that we do. Surplus conveyance. So the city, so speaking about, you know, what is the city doing, looking inwardly, strike force, all these sorts of types of things, we've identified, there are some surplus properties that may be usable for housing. So two organizations work with the city and the land bank, so Grove Park Foundation and Atlanta Land Trust, we work with them to basically receive the property from the city, these have been subsequently conveyed to these partners for them to turn it into housing. And so these are parcels, and you can see the, you see the locations and addresses. So again, and then lastly, under this transactional slide, we, the land bank, received share from Marshals D portfolios about twenty years ago. There's basically just damaged title that came in. There were over six hundred of these types of parcels, about three hundred and forty or so have been actually, four hundred and forty have actually been disposed of since this period of time. We determine we have about a hundred and sixty that'll remain, title's not clear. So what we actually, and work with you and the council and your members, your colleagues, authorized this four hundred thousand dollars to basically clear the title, and make this clean property that we can now put towards housing. We've engaged council, the first forty are in process, so we had to acquire title, had to clean it all up, and then hopefully, these will be ready. It takes six to nine months, you know, you have to go through the full court proceedings and all of this. So our timeline is, they have these properties available also. So in addition to the demo lien RFQs and all of that, we're going to probably have thirty to forty properties we're going to put out for developers at the end of this year also. So this has been another opportunity to bring properties to the market, and we will have affordability requirements on those, and we'll be happy to talk between now and then, talk to city council, and make sure that we're in alignment in terms of, you know, what do we really want out of these parcels? Because these are basically, we can determine what can be built on these parcels. So that kind of gives you a sense of the transactional things we've been involved in. So what has land bank been doing operationally? We did our first comp study for the organization, we'd never done one, and we brought in, and we just want to make sure everything's competitive, just like everybody else. You've heard some of the people present earlier about retaining staff and being competitive. So we did find that we were out of step a little bit with the market, and so we've made some one-time adjustments to salaries across the board, and I think everybody's in good shape right now. And so now going forward, I think we'll just kind of be in a normal pace of merit increases and all of that. So that's one thing we did. Our records. We also are digitizing everything we have. So all of our records are being currently digitized, it's three phases, two phases are done, we're in the last phase. And so hopefully by the next, really April, May, all the historical records of land bank will be digitized, and therefore we'll have easy access to property deeds, tax documents, bank records, all these other types of things, which is a good, a big, otherwise before, we would have to go dig through files and go find property records and all of that. And we deal with a lot of property, and we've been in business for a long period of time, so we've actually gone all the way back to everything we could put our hands on, and this is part of this whole project. So that's a big shot in your arm for just being organized. We have basically been moved to adopt a different schedule as well, just like everybody else, since we emerged, we went to a three-two work schedule, just letting everybody know. We do have our offices, we are there definitely Tuesday through Thursday, Monday, Friday are optional to come in, I'm often there anyway. But just to let people know, if you walk up to the, on the office on a Monday and Friday, you knock and nobody comes, that's because we are remote working, but we're all available via obviously email and phone and all, but still happy to arrange in-person meetings if needed. People are interested in what's happening in Atlanta, and so this is just an example of things we've been asked to participate in. We've been on several webinars with national organizations, we attended the Chicago Conference for Reclaiming Macon Properties, which is a national conference about Macon property, we presented there, been asked to go down. So also, one of my hats is, I'm the president of the Georgia Association of Land Banks, so there are twenty-five land banks in the state. And so we actually went to the GIC training retreat, some of you may be familiar with that, and actually do the, often do the panel on land banking, so we've done that, interviewed on Small Business Network, one of our staff members was actually interviewed as an emerging leader of color in land banking, so she was involved in that. And then recently, I testified before the New York City Council, because they're actually looking at creating a land bank, they don't have one in the city. So everybody wants to see what's happening in Atlanta, which is, which is a good thing. And a majority of you are curious about what was said and what was done, a lot of this stuff is on our website, and we do push out things like this on our social media, so Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn, just for historical purposes. In addition, like I said, I'm president of the Land Bank Association, as we emerged from COVID, we all decided to have a summit in Macon. This is the agenda, you can kind of, can't really read it off the site here, but you can probably see a little better there. But it was a full-flash deal, you see, it was a wide range of people that came from across the state, and this is a full assembly down in Macon, that was back in June of last year. And then, and lastly, terms of governance. So the board is made up of seven individuals, four appointed by the City of Atlanta, three appointed by Fulton County. You'll see the highlighted marks here, so the ones in green, those are City of Atlanta appointees, and those three are expiring, basically now. We've already been in contact with administration, they're working through, proposing reappointments for two, and then finding a replacement for one who does not want to continue their service. So just look forward to those coming to council for action. And then the ones in yellow, those are Fulton County's appointees. Well, Fulton County's, what they do is, they actually have all of their appointees expire on the same day. So in August of this year, basically, all of their appointees will sunset. So they're aware of this, and so they'll be looking to either reappoint these persons or find new people to do that. So that kind of gives you a broad kind of drive-by of the land bank, what we've been up to. You know, at the end of the day, what are we trying to do? We're trying to create affordable end-market housing, we're trying to eliminate blight that exists in the community and neighborhood revitalization, and we realize, you know, we've talked earlier, you know, controlling land is imperative to solving some of these problems. So that's just kind of a general overview of the land bank. And lastly, as I close out, we are, the Fulton Atlanta Land Banks, any city in the county is actually eligible to participate, to join. So the City of South Fulton is actually interested in joining, they've actually just approved a resolution to petition for membership. So we're looking to come back to you and seek approval of City of South Fulton coming into the organization. And that's it. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have from these slides, or anything else that might be on your mind.
Thank you so much, Mr. Norman. Before I turn the floor over to colleagues, just a couple of quick questions. One, what percentage of the land bank's properties have improvements on top of them versus like just completely vacant?
I would say, at this point, more than eighty percent are vacant. There was a time when a lot of the properties had improvements on them, but a lot of this now is just vacant land, just from the origin, you know, the origin of where it's coming from, if it's demo, you know, demo liens is gone, other properties that we've got from other arenas, is a lot of the structures are gone at this point.
And the reason why I ask is, I imagine properties with improvements may, I'm assuming puts a dent in your maintenance and operating budget, because there's a lot of other considerations around rats and mildew and mold that you have to keep remediating and addressing and that sort of thing.
Well, fortunately, for those types of things, those aren't as much of an issue because they're not occupied. So for us, you know, we basically have the structures enclosed, but we do have intrusion. And we have, we've had fires, we've had other things that have resulted in actually us having to demolish properties because they've gotten so bad from those types of decay. So it is hard, it is hard to maintain a boarded structure for an extended period of time with no activity.
Okay.
So, yes.
And the reason why I asked, I guess this other question will lead to why I asked the previous question, but does the land bank, y'all hold the title or deed for those properties?
We do.
And so the reason why I asked the first question is, I get a lot of code complaints and issues with properties all across my district, never once have I had an issue where the Metro Atlanta Land Bank has come up as being a negligent property owner, because several of the properties that we deal with are publicly owned, and we will slap those public agencies on the wrist to make sure they're cleaning up their properties, but never has been the Atlanta Land Bank. So I just appreciate y'all's commitment to the maintenance side, and to continue to make sure that even though these properties aren't vacant or occupied, they're not negatively impacting our community. So it's a very leading way to give you some kudos.
Well, I appreciate that. We do make it an effort to, you know, our posture is, we want to be a good citizen. You know, if we're abating problems, we don't want to contribute to the problems.
Absolutely. Well, my last question before I turn over to Councilmember Lewis, there's been an active discussion happening right now with regards to property owners, you know, losing their home, or losing access to their homes, because there's a tax lien or a solid waste fees lien, and those liens get bought up by investors from the county, and by the time that property goes up for auction, we don't really have a strong budget to be able to compete with some of these private investors to get those properties back into the hands of Atlanta families. Has there been any conversation with the county or with any other stakeholders to interject maybe the land bake into that process, so that we can acquire those liens early enough to where we have the land in a governmental, quasi-governmental agency, so that we don't have to worry about the investors doing the speculation and all that sort of stuff? But can you unpack that a little bit?
Yeah, I mean, that's a good question. I mean, so there are a few things that happen in that scenario, you know, so if you're a private owner that has that, and you're going delinquent on your taxes, one, I will say that if you do call the tax mission, they will, he will oftentimes try to work out a payment plan with you, because if you think of what the investors are doing, because actually you can pay your taxes via credit card now as well. So what these investors are basically doing, they are your credit card, except their interest rate and their fees are going to be much more than if you found another way to do that. So just by the mere fact of transferring and somebody selling your tax lien for one year, you have not lost control of your property just yet. You know, there's a time period, a year has to go by, and you have all these other types of things, and there are legal processes that basically then turn into, there are statutory fees, twenty percent, and then a ten percent, so it does start to kind of stack, and that's what happens to people that say, fine, it's been a year, a year and a half, I really don't want to lose my property, but now I don't want to have to pay the past due, but now I have to pay this person twenty percent, and then I have to pay another ten percent, and then it becomes kind of out of their league, right? So if there were a situation where there was an ability to either pay, assist them in paying that tax before it got that far gone, that would help them to stay in that, or if there's a payment plan put in place by the tax mission to help them, keep them getting to the point, that is possible. When they actually go to tax sale, the land bank can basically bid on those properties just like anybody else, right? And so there could be a situation where the land bank could be a bidder for it. But of course, if you're bidding for it, there are two ways we can bid for property. We can say, we'll bid for it as a credit bid, because we're the land bank, we don't have to pay the taxes, we can just pay the fees. But then, or we could bid up like anybody else, but then we have to pay cash. So we had to be capitalized to compete with private investors to basically have that tax position. But in theory, if we were to acquire, let's say, all the liens that went for sale, we bought them all, then we could turn around and say, okay, now we're going to negotiate with you on how you're going to pay this stuff off, and we're more patient probably than investors on the street. But we have not been, but of course, you have to capitalize to do those types of things, because that could be a multimillion-dollar exercise, and that has happened in other states where they've done that. But again, that's just to kind of get into the very creative aspect of how you basically inject a public agency into the tax realm. And so, so there are several steps before it gets to that final step, which is you lose your property. And so I just want to make sure that that is clear as well, that it becomes tough, it becomes troublesome, but, but once you've lost it and they sell it, and you have a tax deed, and then there is a final, final step to that, that expires, but after that final period expires, you basically have lost your property at that point in time. So I do just want to make sure that people understand that. So I do just want to make sure that people understand that there are iterations to that whole, that whole thing.
And I do want to correct myself in regards to the tax lien portion of that. I was thinking more of, even though I mentioned, you know, someone losing their home, I know we have a lot of areas, property issues where folks don't live in a state, aren't connected to the city in any way, may not even realize that the property is, is in their name or in their family's name. And those end up getting snatched up by investors as well when we have this housing shortage and seeing where there's this opportunity for the landbank to play a role in acquiring that so that we can get it back into the hands of, as one of my colleagues likes to call it, indigenous Atlantans versus investors that don't necessarily have community's heart in mind and interest.
Yeah, or, or even conveying their, if it's partial interest, you know, convey the, donate their interest to us and can we do quiet title like we're doing with these other sheriff marshals deeds to basically gain control, consolidate control of that property? And then we might be able to have that, right? So, but we do have a donation program. We do have, doors are open for anybody that's having these types of issues to talk to us about, you know, if you live in Houston and you just don't want this property and you've inherited it, you don't know what to do, you know, call us and we might be to work out something like that. We actually, there was a property across from the, the old Kennedy Middle School. And there was a couple. The mother had the property, she gave her interest to the wife. The, the mother passed, the wife passed, then the, the widowed husband ended up with the property. He lived in Dallas. He didn't want to deal with the property, he ended up donating it to us, right? And then we were able to turn that around. So, so there are situations, we can have these conversations and just see if there's a possibility.
I appreciate that.
Sure.
Councilman Lewis.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you so much for the work you're doing. As you see, the work you're doing has to be shown across the country, which is why they're asking you to come to other cities and which is why you're leading the state, the state association. So I appreciate you for your service on that. Also, Conley Road, to work with your office and to work with the developers at Conley Road is to see a public-private partnership working the right way, to see you holding them accountable on the north end and to see the south be open and to see a true workforce housing, to see the affordability component be at, what's the AMI at Conley Road, if you know?
Well, you know, this is what we call a natural affordable housing type, type deal. I think they are, I think the unit's about a thousand dollars a month or 11,000, 1100 for, I think there are two, and there's some, and there'll be some three bedrooms on the north side. So that's kind of where they are. There's not a required, there's not a, there's not a hard like cap on that project because of just the natural affordability of it. So, because there was also no ongoing mechanism for us to enforce anything because it's none of our money is in it, it's all private money.
So you mean to tell me a private investor came in and was able to, to do some real affordability to where folks are getting two and three bedroom apartments? No, really, really ain't no one a bedroom apartments out there. These is for families, two and three bedroom apartments where folks are paying less than 12, 1300 dollars a month.
Yes, it's, it's a private developer in doing that. And I would, I would point out this, as far as the, the neighborhoods, the South River Gardens Association, you probably know, know well. I mean, they, they were very vocal from day one. Ms. Nichols, Shirley Nichols is, is my buddy because, you know, she's been all involved. So all the negotiations colored all of this stuff. And even to them having input in the name of the apartments.
They even made, I know they even named their apartments and they, they're trying to make sure that they're fingerprints all over the entire community, which is how I know that district, which is where Pool Creek is, Gibber Garden, which I mentioned a little earlier, they're okay with affordable and that opponent coming for real. Not, not that other kind of affordable stuff we've been talking about in Atlanta, where they want 80% of what you make per month. So I appreciate you for your service and for being, holding our hand throughout that process because you led us on this. My question to you is, as soon as my computer comes back on. My question to you is, when's the last time that you did an audit on the amount of organizations that have held properties through the landbank for five years?
So it'd been a limited number. So I could probably give you a quick, so we started the program in 2010, so it was the first one in the country, actually. And I'll give you some history about that and kind of explain that. So, so when the crash occurred, a lot of the nonprofits here, the CDC's nonprofits, their business model included development of housing. So ramping, going up to the crash, you can recall, remember, all the prices were going so high, so fast, they couldn't keep up with their taxes. And we knew their work was so important that we wanted them to not lose their portfolios. So we created a landbanking program to basically, we held their property taxes down for a couple of years to say, okay, well, we'll pump the brakes on that. Then the crash occurred, and then when the crash occurred, the other part of their model failed, which was then they created operational revenue by selling that property. Well, guess what happened in 2010, 2011? Couldn't get a bank loan, you couldn't get construction loans, so they couldn't build anything. So then they started losing properties. And so we basically, at one point, we probably held every CDC at that time probably had property in the landbank. So if you think of, you know, Pittsburgh Community Improvement Association, SUMAC, RRC at the time, you know, just kind of go down the list of all the CARIS, which is now FCS. See, all of these different organizations had their property in the landbank under this program. A lot of them have rolled it out. We even held the Annie Casey Foundation, all of this stuff. So, so I'd say that's a finite group of, of developers because actually to landbank with us, you have to be a nonprofit, first of all. And so, so they're known for profits. The only for-profit one was a joint venture with Columbia and SUMAC. And they did a scattered site, Lytech deal in the Seminole and Kansasville neighborhood, right? But everybody else has been a nonprofit. And then also, again, we've held property for Invest Atlanta, which we still currently do. And we've actually done some for the City of Atlanta, held some of their property short term. So, so I can get you that information specifically, but it's going to be contained in that, those types of organizations. But the names will probably sound familiar when I, when I get it to you.
I appreciate you when I ask that question because I'm thinking a lot about the Fort Matt Ferguson deal. And I know some, some of the, some of the folks that we worked with are, they ran up against that deadline and all of a sudden, the, the entire thing has changed and what the outlook would be has changed. So I would hope that we are watching folks at that deadline so we can actually take care of them. I appreciate you again for coming today. I appreciate you for your work and continue to stay on the, the developer's head. I, I love what y'all are doing. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Lewis. Councilmember Waits.
Thank you so much. I had a question for you.
Yes.
What is the process for any nonprofits that are looking for space or access to donated buildings who may be eligible for providing services to a community? What's that process?
Well, it's a common question, so we don't have any buildings. So we really don't have any means for obtaining title to commercial buildings primarily. So it's primarily been, in our history, it's primarily been residential property, single family, multifamily. And so, just for backdrop, so there really, so there are really five ways that we get property into the landbank. We can buy it just like anybody else, it can be donated, it could be surplus government conveyance, kind of ones I've talked about. It could be a tax foreclosure, tax-dedied property. Or it could be some other type of conveyance from a criminal, a criminal matter where our partner's basically transferred in. So if you start thinking about all those different types of properties, oftentimes a commercial building might not necessarily come into our possession unless we have a pool of funding to actually go acquire it or for some reason somebody walks away from it. And again, as these councilmen mentioned about the taxes, you know, a lot of those commercial buildings that go for tax sale, those are acquired by pretty well-heeled investors. And so we don't oftentimes see those. But some of we did have that. The typically way we dispose of property is via an application, which would be a specific set of criteria, will do requests for proposals or qualifications, and in those we'll lay out the requirements. And we typically are seeking, in any instance, do you have experience? Do you have capacity? Can you deliver within a certain timeframe? And do you meet whatever the goals are, either affordability or some type of rent advantage situation? That would be part of it. So we typically don't have one-off, you know, knock on the door, hey, do you have a property? It's typically more of an orderly deal. All of our inventory is online. So if you go to our website and click on inventory, it's a GIS-based listing of all the inventory that I talked about, you can see it. So if anybody, so we ever in the future have buildings, you'll be able to see them. But right now, we don't have any. It's a common question, but we just don't have buildings.
Okay, so you do have residential properties?
We have residential properties, that is correct.
Okay, so how can I obtain a list? You're saying that's online?
All that's online. And so, so what will happen, if you go online and you click on a property that you're interested in, if it is available, now bear in mind that some properties are not available even though we, we own them. What does that mean? If we're holding it for another party, they're the ones that are going to dispose of it, not us. So all those property for Invest Atlanta, for West Side Future Fund, Police Foundation, they have their own process. We're just holding it. For ours, the application will then populate and say, complete the application. As it stands right now, actually, we don't have any surplus property available right now. That's why the, so the, the properties we will have available for, for putting back out and to use will be these new sheriff and marshal deeds and these demolition lien properties. So everything else you see right now, most of it's actually already obligated. So we need to, so we need to acquire more property and that's what we're working on now, is actually refilling the, the portfolio.
Okay, can you send me a list of the property that's available?
Yeah, we can do it, we'll extract it, do an export and, and send it to your office.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? See, none. Thank you so much, Mr. Norman. I appreciate you.
Thank you. If you could be in further service, give us a call.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
All right, our next and final presentation, Commissioner Justin Cutler. Main event.
Good afternoon, Chair Dozier, members of CDHS. Happy to be here today. So on behalf of the men and women of the Department of Parks and Recreation, it's an honor to be able to present their work and all the great work that they do to serve our young people as well as our seniors and our families in Atlanta. So thank you for that opportunity. So today we have our quarterly report, which will be covering several different topics. Mainly, we will be talking about our spring recreation programs, we'll be talking about our summer camp programs, our school break camps that we just launched this last year, and we'll be talking about our lifeguard training programs and how you can help us hire the future lifeguard for our summer. So our spring recreation programs, what we offer in every spring is typically our TOTS program, it's our T-ball program, a track and field program, our youth baseball program, our after-school. Bakers, up on Lake Alatuna, we have a boat that we take kids out on, we have canoes and different kayaks that people can experience. And it's just a great way to get away and really be in a natural environment. So if you haven't checked that out, we'd be happy to take you up there and give you a tour. We also have Galloway Gardens. As you can see, we have skating and, and college football Hall of Fame, many different places that we go for field trips. And again, $35, great deal, great opportunity for your young people. We also have our Teen Leader Academy, and this year we'll be kicking off a spring break tournament. Every year we host a spring break basketball tournament. So again, the teen team, ages 13 to 18, will be hosting this. It's a great opportunity for young people to stay safe during the week and get together with their friends and play basketball. So we'll be offering that April 4th through the 7th. And we are working with the City of Chicago, they've been coming up a lot today, I don't know what it is in the water, but we're working with Chicago to actually do a kind of a pregame on April 3rd at one of our parks as a way to build relationships with other kids from our, other parts of the country. So working with the City of Chicago on that program as well. In focus, we wanted to talk a little bit about lifeguard training. This year, we're slated to open 12 pools beginning the weekend Memorial Day weekend, but we need your help to do that. We need to hire over 100 lifeguards and pool managers in order to operate all 12 pools, and this is a real critical need. To this end, we've been attending six job fairs since October of 2022. This represents fairs hosted by council members, work source, and we've also have two job fairs coming up this Saturday, March 18th, from 10 to 2 at CT Martin Community Center. I know that we've sent information to each of your council offices, asking that you share this on social media and in your newsletters. We really need your help. We'll have park operations, forestry camp best friends and lifeguards or aquatics team there. We'll do onsite interviews as well as onsite screening. We want to get as many people as hired this weekend as possible so we'll be ready for the summer that for us begins May 27th with the opening of the pools. Also, we have teen-focused camp best friend and lifeguard positions that we have a job fair on April 9th. And we're also working with Fox 5, who will be hosting live on April 3rd, the first day of spring break, to record their morning show segment to bring awareness to camp best friends and lifeguard programs and hiring opportunities through the City of Atlanta. So please look for that on Fox 5, April 3rd, begin with the morning show. We hope to get a lot of good press. We've also done over 100 yard signs placed around the city, banners at all of our indoor and outdoor pools, as well as ads on our City of Atlanta-owned billboards. So we're really trying to get the information out as wide and as broad as we can. And we've also set up booths at the recommendation of your staff member, council member Dozier, at various APS schools as well as Atlanta universities to table and to engage people on how they can participate by being a lifeguard in our programs. And we'll also teach you how to swim. If people don't know how to swim, they want to be a lifeguard, we are happy to help coach you through that swimming process. It's a life-saving technique that you need to know about, and so we're happy to help teach people how to swim so they can become lifeguards. Also, we launched our Saturday Recreation Hours. This is exciting. Historically, pre-COVID, we had our community centers that were open, and beginning March 1st, we were able to open up four community centers, Martin Luther King Recreation Center, CT Martin Recreation Center, William Walker Recreation Center, and Roseville Fan Recreation Center from 10 to 2 on Saturdays. And at some point in the near future, we also hope to be open on Sundays as well. Currently, given our lifeguarding shortage, it does not include pool hours, but we do hope to add pool hours as we hire more lifeguards. So again, the added benefit of hiring lifeguards now is that we'll be able to offer aquatic opportunities sooner on Saturdays when we know families typically have time off and they want to recreate, and they may not be able to recreate during the week and our community centers aren't open. So this is a great way to, again, support our neighbors, support seniors and support families in Atlanta. Another thing that we've launched as part of our Recapture APD Officer Program is our Park Ranger Program. And kind of jokingly, we all call Major Singh the Lone Ranger, and he calls himself the Lone Ranger because he is the Lone Ranger. We have one park ranger now that began in January 2023. Major Singh, if you've ever met him, he's a phenomenal individual, really has a heart of caring and of compassion and works daily in our parks to engage park patrons that are using our parks and help direct them to more positive activities. He's dedicated to, at park sites, he has arrest power, and he's working on bringing on additional recaptured officers to help support the program as well. He's a great ambassador. So to this end, we've been able to more, to enforce more permit compliance at Piedmont Park, where we oftentimes have impromptu events, and other parks throughout our system. So he's also helped to coordinate on issues that we've had at West Side Park, where with Van. So he's also helped to coordinate on issues that we've had at West Side Park, with vandalism and damage to the restrooms and a car incident running over a bollard. So he's been a great assistance to our team, really brought a new breadth of engagement. And for once, we are moving slightly from a reactive standpoint to a little less reactive because now we're able to be proactive. He's also working a case at Grant Park in which we have issues with people using the bathrooms inappropriately at night, as well as going to Howell Park and working with people that were camping in the picnic shelter there as well. So if you have an issue at one of your parks, please let us know as soon as possible, and we'll work with Major Singh to deploy him as a resource to address those issues experiencing in our parks. Also, we conducted, and we were in touch with each of your offices, about our request for information related to the tennis request for proposal and operating agreement that we'll be launching at the end of March. To this end, we've also been making some adjustments. We transitioned from Play Point to Play Point, Play-by-Point for our reservation system. This has brought new functionality for our five tennis centers. We conducted a public survey in which we had over 700 responses as part of our request for information. So 700 people shared their opinion, and to the left there, you can see, or your right, you can see a word cloud that shows what were the highest number of responses. Just so if you can't see the text, the biggest one there was pickleball. A lot of people requested that we allow pickleball at our tennis centers. We also had more early morning hours as well as more evening hours. We also heard that they want to see a balance between programs and free play, meaning that oftentimes, you know, when we look at these operating agreements, we need to make sure that we're balancing profitability of the tennis centers so as not to go into the red, but also providing programs and opportunities for reservation play. So some of the feedback we heard was that when we're looking at types of programs and when we're offering programs, we want to make sure that we still reserve some tennis courts for reservation or free play, even when we may have a large number of programs taking place at the site. So that's something that we'll look for in the request for proposals that we get back. So this information will directly impact how we evaluate the request for proposals that we anticipate getting over this latter, over Q2 and Q3 of 2023 for the operation of our five tennis centers. Also, our golf programs continue to outperform year over year, and this year we'll be updating the golf paths at Chastain Park. We'll be repaving them with asphalt. They've fallen into deterioration. Last year, we remodeled, did several improvements at Brownsville Golf Course. So this is the natural cycle of addressing different needs at each of the golf courses. In the future, we also plan to address top homes, the irrigation at top homes golf course, as well as the cart pass and the course layout, and then we'll work on addressing the needs at Candler Park as well. But our golf numbers continue to do a great job. We're recently completing, we're in the process of finalizing our golf business plan, which outlines the operations for the next five years. And historically, if you remember back a couple of years, a private operator was operating the golf courses, and it required substantial capital investment or investment by the city. And to date, we're operating our golf courses in the black. The team's doing a phenomenal job, and we're really proud of the work that they're doing every day to anticipate what are the needs and to operate as efficiently as possible and to keep the courses looking great. So if you haven't played at Atlanta Golf, come out and play. It's a great opportunity. I played three of the four courses. I still need to play Chastain, but we have great staff and great courses, and they're affordable. So come out and play. Here's some metrics. At the last CDHS meeting, y'all requested seeing more numbers related to our performance, and so here are some of our metrics related to mowing, trimming, and blowing, garbage cans serviced, and litter and limb removal. So as you can see, our target is on the right, and our ability to meet the target is on the left. In many of those cases, we're below target, and we constantly evaluating how we can address meeting the target. One of the changes that we've initiated this spring, given that we recently had some warm weather, if you remember, the last two weekends, we've had days or a couple of days in the 70s. I know today it's relatively cold, but it's coming, and we know it's coming, and so we're prepared. The team's looking at how we can adjust staffing schedules to make sure up until April 1st that trash will be removed adequately from our parks in the hot weekends at our busiest parks. And then, beginning April 1st, we'll have enough seasonals, and we'll go to seven-day operations for litter and limb removal and garbage can collection. So happy to talk through that, but we are making adjustments as we see fit to address issues that come up. Also, some additional staffing things, some additional staffing activities that we're taking place in order to fill, some of the backlog that we have. Currently, we're down about 20% of our team, and so we're working on retention by looking at compensation via compensation and vacancy studies. So we're working with the HR department, who's launching their class and comp study. We're also arbitrarily looking at our compensation and comparing it with other departments. You may have heard an earlier speaker talk about the discrepancy between the Department of Parks and Recreation, the Department of Public Works, the Department of Enterprise and Asset Management. So we're truing up those discrepancies to make sure that our positions are paying the same or close to the same in order to be competitive within the city. We're also providing in-house support for operations. So the City of Atlanta, we're operating the pools this year, will be doing the lifeguarding and pool management, and we'll have a contractor take care of the pumps and the different infrastructure related to the pools. And we intend to see better results as part of that. But we could use your help recruiting lifeguards, back to that point. We're also offering extended hours at the recreation centers, thus providing more opportunities for employees to work and taking advantage of the schedule that we have within our staff. We're also reducing the backlog for skilled services. I didn't have a graph up there, but our skilled service team has done a phenomenal job reducing their backlog as well as our forestry team to bring our work orders within the service level agreements. We're also developing additional programming to address the top requested items as far as weekend hours, tennis and pickleball, as well as addressing campus friends and senior programs. So we're making adjustments. And then we're also create strong marketing communications strategies to increase awareness. You may have seen our social media. If you haven't, check us out on Instagram, Twitter, and Facebook. There's a lot of great information that our team puts out, a lot of the great videos. This last week, they did a whole promotional kind of post around the majorette dance program, just to make sure that we're both highlighting our young men as well as our young women and the different opportunities that we provide. Then lastly, again, we have our job fair. That's this Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00 at CT Martin Community Center. Please encourage your friends and neighbors and colleagues to send this information out far and wide. We will be having, doing screening, interviews, and we look forward to having more people on our team. So please come join us and please help share the word. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Cutler. I'll be quick in my questions. I know my colleagues have questions as well. Just the first one that I had was with the lifeguard applications. You had mentioned it several times. I'm curious how many applications you've had come in so far and how many we have in the training pipeline so far?
Yeah, so far, we have, we've had, I would say, around roughly 50 to 60 applications that we've had. Right now, the biggest barrier that we have, I just was talking with our aquatic manager, is once we get the application, once we have certified lifeguard, it's getting them to fill out the W-2 and the paperwork and the job, the work permit. And so that's part of the reason we're having this job fair this weekend is to get the work permit, to get the W-2 and the different pieces of paperwork processed so that we can onboard them and begin the training process by getting them more hours at our pools. So that's one of the biggest barriers. We have some applications. We have some people who have gone through the programs, but we don't have the paperwork needed. So we're working with the families to get that completed.
Thank you. And then my next question, with regards to the metrics that you shared, I know roughly about 10% below target on most of the items that you listed. I think you heard it today, and we've heard at previous CDHS meetings, a lot of demand for an increase in our maintenance budget to help address some of those challenges. I was curious if you can maybe provide some insight in where you think there's some opportunity. I know before we get a chance to provide our input into the city budget, the administration has a version that, you know, taking your feedback into consideration to be able to present to us. Is there anything that we can expect that would address that issue?
Yeah, we're constantly looking at what we can do with the resources that are allocated to us, and I think some of the things that we're looking at is, again, creating those flexible schedules so we can have staff cover Saturday and Sunday when we have hotter weekends. We're also looking at, looking at the seasonal allocation, and could we move some of those seasonal positions to permanent positions within the given resources? That way, we aren't constantly having to lay people off and then rehire them, but we're able to keep a more consistent staffing level in some of our positions. So that's another way that we can operate within the existing allocation of resources and find ways to optimize it. We're also bringing on two positions called Operation Consultants, one for recreation and one for parks, and those individuals will be assessed with looking at our operations. How are we operating? How are we delivering services? Do we need to improve routes? Do we need to look at districts? How are we operating? And that will happen over this next year, looking at ways that we can gain operational efficiencies, all within the given resources.
That's all I have. I'll go ahead and turn it over to Councilmember Westmoreland.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner. It was good to see you yesterday at the groundbreaking for a new 1.2-mile stretch of the belt line that you will be responsible for maintaining once it's finished, and it'll be good to see you next Wednesday at the groundbreaking for a 1.3-mile stretch on the west side that you will be responsible for maintaining when it is completed. Two questions, one observation. On the recapture program, as you look into the FY24 landscape, is that a program that you intend to continue into the next fiscal year? How has that been so far?
Yeah, we intend to keep that program as long as we can. It's been doing a great job in the short term that we've been operating, right? It's just a little under three months. And Major Singh has been able to help us move the needle on several key areas as far as encampment, addressing different hotspots, and it's been really helpful, and it helps our team feel empowered knowing that they have somebody on kind of our side, if you will, helping to translate what is needed in a park, and Major Singh is the perfect person for that. So he's been doing a great job. So yes, we intend to continue that program and look to expand it as Major Singh is able to recruit additional recaptured officers. And we have the commitment of the police chief to continue that as well because it helps to balance the resource and the response to these issues that we're facing in our parks because we are able to send a certified officer that is connected to APD, and that helps.
Do we, is it just during the day right now, during the day and at night? And if not both, is there a desire to do both, and is that a resource question?
Yeah, so Major Singh, he flexes his schedule based on the needs of the job, which is, I think, another benefit of just who he is as a person and his ability to adapt. So he flexes his schedule based on the needs and the requirements and the opportunity to address hotspots and different issues that flare up. So he just adjusts as needed, communicates with myself, Doug Voss, and Adrian Wright, and we work together on assigning work and identifying the hotspots.
Second question. On Slide 12, the percentages related to mowing, trimming, garbage, litter. Thank you for sharing them. The percentages we're hitting are clearly in almost all instances below what we're shooting for. I assume that is related to the 20% vacancy rate that you mentioned?
Correct.
What, specifically or broadly, how many positions is included in that 20%?
20%, you know, I think, I'll look to Doug Voss, but as far as the number, I've seen numbers around 20 positions, you know, if we look at that. But Doug, is that a rough number? It might be higher than that. So 20 to 40 positions, yeah.
Okay. How many broadly or specifically of those positions are funded?
Well, I think, again, like 20% of our positions, we have, 26% of our positions were unfunded within the fiscal year '23. All right. Our fiscal year, I think, are we in '24 or '23?
We're in '23.
I'm still learning. Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Fiscal year '23.
And that's a helpful statistic for us to recognize moving into the next couple months, and I'm going to write it down. My observation, I took a long bike ride on Saturday, and part of that took me by Brownsville Golf Course. Where, okay, easy, where I noticed, thanks to Councilmember Winston talking about Goodie Mob lyrics, Garth Brooks has a good song about fences too. But there's a fence around Brownsville Golf Course, and you didn't put it there, but it's there, and there's one around top homes as well. There are not fences around Candler Park Golf Course or Chastain, and that wasn't lost on me, and I suspect there might be some folks up here who would be interested in helping take down some of those fences, as I think they signify on our facilities the same thing they do on Atlanta housing properties. So an observation for the future, and thank you for your presentation today.
Thank you, Councilmember Westmoreland. Councilmember Winston?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Cutler. And I just will note that it was Councilmember Westmoreland who got me started on my fence kick this weekend with his observation. But we'll add to the fact that not just this particular fence, I have been in contact with Deputy Commissioner Voss about fencing in other areas where we've taken over for the path. For instance, specifically, South Town Gate is closed, and I know there were some security issues there. But I think just, you know, overall, would like, you know, to reiterate what Councilmember Westmoreland said, and being able to open some more access to people who actually live around some of the courses and being able to use that. Did want to go back to the lifeguard issue. I fully recognize you all are doing everything you can to get lifeguards hired before the pool season starts. But what is the contingency plan in case we don't get to the numbers you need to get all the pools open?
Yeah, no, the contingency plan really is to continue to push forward as much as possible to get all 12 open. Should we not get all 12 open, then the intention would be to have different, select pools geographically based on where they're located, because every pool ironically has somewhat of a sister pool, which is somewhat relatively close. So we would open up the different pools based on geography and abilities of opening. If one pool requires more staff or less staff, depending on the gallons or capacity, we would prioritize those that require less staff, obviously. But that's how we would do it, is we'd have a staggered approach based on geography to spread out the pool and opportunity as much as possible.
You have kind of a cutoff date to kind of make that decision, or will it be rolling up until probably Memorial Day?
It'll probably be rolling up until that date, right? But it'll likely be weekly after that. So let's say we hit the mark of 12 pools, or let's say we hit the mark for six pools, right? So it'll be six pools that day, and it's not going to, that number's not going to change for a week or two weeks, right? So then it'll likely be two weeks after that first May 27 date that then we open another tranche of pools, be it two, three, four, five, or six, based on the hiring that we were able to do between the 27th and that next date.
And then kind of just more expanding the conversation, and not just pools, but recreation centers, you know, recognizing the needs for more staffing. Has there been any conversations about maybe opening up MOUs to other organizations that may be able to help offset some of the staffing challenges that we have?
Yeah, happy to report that we are working with various nonprofits to identify spaces as many of our community centers that are underutilized and could be done in partnership. So we have received a number of requests for those, use of those spaces, and are working through those as they come in.
Okay. And then, weekend hours. Was happy to see that we started having some Saturdays for some of our rec centers. Is there a plan to kind of start expanding that as you ramp up staffing, or are there other areas you're looking at to start getting some other recreation centers open over the weekends?
Yeah, again, it's staffing. And then I think it's also looking at, as we open up this summer, you know, people want to be outside in kind of the shoulder seasons, obviously, August, July, August, not so much outside. But looking at mobile recreation and how we can use our mobile recreation program to also meet those needs. Opening up a facility requires a number of staff, and then we also have seasonal staff that do our mobile recreation program, and that could be another way to meet those recreational needs, more on an ad hoc kind of geographic basis. So, but yes, our intention as we gain more staff is to open more centers, but prioritizing these four centers because they're our largest centers, they're geographically distributed, and they have our pools. And so I think making, or except for William Walker, doesn't have a pool yet, but making sure that we have the opportunity for as many people geographically to access our services on the weekends.
And I recognize, Atlanta's in that period where we were teased with spring, but feels like winter again. But just an observation, I've been seeing more people get to our parks lately, which also, you know, I find that there's more trash and litter, you know, over the weekend, we get into Monday, Tuesday. And I know, you know, your staff is doing everything they can to make sure they stand on top of that. I just wonder if it may be opportunities to maybe look for just, you know, putting more trash bins in the park to help alleviate some of the staffing issues that we have and being able to get to those. I don't know if, you know, we have some in a warehouse. I don't know what that process looks like, but I just, you know, just an observation that maybe, you know, we can look into adding more trash bins into the park to kind of help alleviate this problem.
Yeah, that may be an option as well, in addition to, you know, people helping to pick up the trash, right? And we are also looking at, so how it works is, between now and April 1st, because April 1st is when we start our seven-day-a-week trash and litter removal. But beginning, between now and April 1st, the team picks up trash Monday through Friday, and then every Sunday morning, they'll pick up the trash. So assuming that we pick up the trash Friday afternoon or Friday morning, the trash will then be collected following, kind of go through Friday, go through Saturday, and it'll be picked up Sunday morning. So Sunday should be fresh and new.
Okay.
So that's how we're, kind of how we're managing. So that's how we're managing that in the interim. More Kansas is an option, and we'll work with the team to see what we can do.
Okay. And you said that should start on April 1st?
Well, that system is starting now.
Okay.
Beginning April 1st, we'll have seven-day-a-week coverage.
Got it. Okay. Well, I appreciate the presentation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Winston. Councilmember Lewis?
And I guess, thank you, Mr. Cutler, for coming in today. And my question is, my first question will stay around that one. As you, we know you just started not too long ago in the city of Atlanta. I know you walked into the situation in which we've been extending and growing our parks. We've, over the past five to 10 years, we probably have not, we've added probably a quarter more park land to the city of Atlanta. I know we've seen Lake Charlotte Natural Preserve come alive. We've seen us purchase land to create new parks. And so similar to questions I ask other folks, is the department, let's say if it had 100 people in that department, 100 park maintenance staff in that department 10 years ago. Today, it currently has that same amount. Have you looked at the department to see an expansion yet?
Yeah, well, we work with the administration to identify ways in which we could expand resources. We also look at ways that we could work with nonprofit partners, Hands-on Atlanta, Park Pride, the various friend groups as a means of augmenting our maintenance. So I think there's many different levers that we can pull and push on. But I think at the end of the day, it's working in tandem with the administration to identify the amount of resources that were allocated and then identifying what we can accomplish with those resources. So for instance, you know, we mow our lawns every 10 business days. We pick up trash every day, because that's a high priority, right? Trash and garbage. But lawn mowing is a lesser priority based on the service level agreement. We also, the number of work orders that we have and the service level agreement related to tree and stump removal, we remove stumps once a year, right? So we have an S service level agreement of 365 business days. So in some cases, you know, it's a matter of just managing expectations. And that's how we manage the balance of resources allocated and opportunity to invest those resources. So it's constantly kind of pulling different levers to find that balance. Sometimes we get it right, sometimes we don't. But we're constantly evaluating, how are we delivering the services with the given amount of resources to meet the needs that we, as we identify? And also the needs that you all identify in your communities and your neighbors identify for us that we then respond to as well.
I will say that the need probably has went up amongst us. As a person who, I visited only Cleveland Avenue Park growing up and Oak Park growing up. So I thought that, Empire Park. So I saw a barricade in front of both my parks. I thought that was normal, right? And so I saw trash on the ground on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, because they would come clean it up on Friday. I thought that was normal. And so I'm saying that currently, Perks and Park, I was talking, I was there last week. I was told they only get cleaned up one time a week where trash is pulled up, picked up. So you just said they pick up trash every day?
Correct. They empty the cans every day.
Okay, empty cans, which is different from, we think in trash...
Going out and like picking it up. But they empty the cans daily, yeah.
And so to me, I think, when I look at the investment, that a moral document, we think about budgets as moral documents. The council, we all invested in Park Pride in different kind of ways in a way we never have in the history of the council. And it was, turned out to be one of the largest investments that they've ever received. So that's us showing you what we care about, right? And so as I say, I hope that my parks, that Perks and Park, that on Tuesday and Wednesday, when folks walk around, that a trash bag, that potato chip bag, that's sitting there on Tuesdays and sitting there on Friday. And so I'm just trying to see if there's any kind of way we can increase. And it's not true, you just started here. But I know you were in Seattle. And I've lived in Seattle, I've lived in Denver, Colorado, I've lived in Philadelphia. And I know our city of Atlanta, our government, we want so much for public services, but we have not seen public service grow. We're seeing trees put up all around our city. And I have some folks in my district who don't want trees put up because they don't think we can service them. They know trees end up fell in the street and fell all over the parks. So they're nervous about Trees Atlanta, which is in our district, putting up new trees, because they're saying, who gonna, who gonna take care of this? Because parks can't take care of it, because they don't got enough people. And so I'm under the impression that we, that the way we fix this is us grow. And so I'm hoping that we look at the budget. I know I talked about it in my budget priorities to the mayor. So I'm asking, is that something that you are looking at? A 25 growth? Because the growth has to be way bigger than just a different department, because we just grew. Like, I'm seeing us buy houses and turn them into parks. I'm seeing us buy land and turn it into a park. And so the Park Ranger program, where we have one park ranger. And I'll ask a question on that, one park ranger. I say, we have barricades in my park. It went from being two barriers with parks with barriers in it to now three, right? So we've got Linkford Park and Empire Park with barriers that are only removed when the city has events. And so I'm thinking, is there a way that the park ranger, because we don't want to deny access to parks, especially parks with parking lots, is there a way that the park ranger can come, open up the park when the parks open and come close it when the parks close, so that we can open up these beautiful parks in our district?
Yeah, I think we can look at that. And I'll touch base with you afterwards as well. But we can look at, what can we do, either from a park ranger standpoint or from a private security standpoint, to open and close different parks, to have gates that swing and whatnot? But yeah, we can look at that.
And lastly, I know we, I'm, we talking about Park Pride, and we like Park Pride. We, we live in, most of the calls I get are from organizations that are doing recreation-type stuff. And I'm getting a whole lot of interviews from folks that are nonprofits, and it seem like they're doing recreation-type stuff, but they need some direction. Are we working with anyone, any organization? Are we looking for any organization that we can work with, that we trust, that they move the way Park Pride does?
Yeah, currently, there isn't a, there isn't a good example on the recreation side similar to what Park Pride does on behalf of the park side. However, we have worked closely with Park Pride that if there is a recreation, some recreation-type of funding that we aren't allowed to apply for as a governmental body, they allow us to work collaboratively with them to apply for those funds, receive those funds, and allocate it to recreation services. But that is a gap. And I think that's something that we need to address in the coming years, is how are we working on the recreation side to develop the opportunity to identify non-traditional funds, either grants, donations, sponsorships, to bring more resources to our recreation as well as our parks and recreation system? So that's something that we're looking at, yes.
And I'll end by saying, as we know, financial budgets, they're moral documents. We've shown it what we care about. And so I would hope that as we, you can use that as an impetus as you move with your budget. Say, hey, the council put up 2.8 million for Park Pride. So they care about parks, care about pride. How are we going to service them? Because Perks, you and I, we meet. I really, truly like the fact that you're open to meeting anytime I reach out. We set up a meeting within 48 hours every single time. The last meeting, we talked about water fountains not being on in my park and not working. Turns out, Perks and Park Water Fountain has never worked, because the screw thing is just broken, right? And so I just want to make sure that, I know if we had enough park maintenance folks, that would be fixed by now. Because when we hit the button on March 1st or May 1st, which day do we hit the button for, for the stuff to work? The water fountains and the water to come on? I meant the sprinklers to come on?
May 27 is when the kind of splash pads and the pools open, yeah.
I would like for the water fountain to work, because I'm a kid that used to have to go and borrow juice sometimes from the store that crossed the street from the park, because our water fountain never worked. So I appreciate you for that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Councilmember Bakhtiari?
Hi, Commissioner.
Good afternoon.
Just one, I had read through the entire presentation. But I have like a list of questions I've been building for the last few months. One, I was, wanted to say thank you, because you really have turned a lot of things around. And echoing, Councilmember Lewis, you're always there and available and accessible when we want to meet or have questions. So I'm deeply appreciative. I was curious about, one quick question was the safety at rec centers. I know that we had the situation in Roseville Fan with one of the kids that played in my district, and it happened in District 12, who was run over. And that we wanted to ensure that, moving forward, we would have some sort of safety in place to ensure that didn't happen again. Has there been changes in that?
Yeah, so some of the things that we've done is we've identified a kind of an event threshold with which we'll have, make sure that we have traffic facilitation and security. But we've also been reviewing our active shooter policies and how are we either using or not using our screening tools that we have at our recreation centers. And so we're looking for ways to retrain and just update our policies related to safety on all aspects. Event use, parking, active shooter, fight, flight, flee kind of protocols, how do you exit the building, fire, and whatnot. I was going to say earthquakes, but I'm not in Seattle anymore, so we don't have to worry about earthquakes.
Thank you for your questions, Councilmember Bakhtiari.
But I will say, you know, I think one thing I just, I want to kind of note that you mentioned, you know, that I think the team is doing a great job, you know? And I think it's, how are we empowering our staff? And how are we supporting their ability to make decisions on a daily basis? Our staff is closest to the work. One of the things that we've done recently is we opened our budget process and asked the staff for feedback on what are ideas that they have, both to restructure our budget, to think differently about our budget. They know the work better than anybody on our team, right? Better than myself, our neighbors, our community members. They are in our parks day in and day out. And so it's important that we recognize their expertise, that we recognize their insight, and that we empower them to help inform, how are we establishing policies? How are we structuring budgets? How are we managing our park system? And so as I mentioned earlier, you know, we are bringing on two operational consultants internally to help empower the team, identify ways in which we can improve. But that'll all be staff-led. Because I believe in the ability of our team, again, they're closest to the work. They know how we operate, and they know what we need to do. And obviously, they'll be, we'll have to balance out what our neighbors want, need, and desire, what council and the mayor, and figure out how we find that balance. But it's really important that we take that step to empower and engage our team and the ideas they have, being closest to the work.
Yes, couldn't agree more. And I'm really glad to hear that Officer Singh was hired for, I want to say the Park Ranger Division?
Correct, yeah, one person, yeah.
And he's currently alone, correct?
Yes, he's doing a great job.
And how, one, I want to find out how we can assist with building out that team? And if Parks is open to, especially being Year of the Youth, collaborating on a youth engagement program around the parks through the Park Ranger program, connecting kids, employment opportunities. Given that, if you go talk to leadership at APS, they'll tell you that our biggest issue right now is that we're, well, besides the wealth gap and poverty and everything else, is that we are losing our kids to illegal ways to make fast money because of survival. If we can channel that towards working within the city and working, connecting our green spaces, which to me is an investment in the name of the Year of the Youth and also a form of public safety, I would love to help with that program in any way, shape, that programming in any way, shape, or form, because I think it would be a huge opportunity to build that over the next couple of years.
Great.
And then our first division. How many, I know that we have only two with DCP. Do we only have one arborist with our Parks Department right now?
We still have three arborists.
Three, okay.
We have, we have two arborists, Jason Ernst and Paul.
For the record, I'd like to quote that Councilmember Chair Dozier was actually wrong about that information and fed me misinformation. So good, I'm glad it's three.
Well, no, I think it is two. Sorry, I think it's two, yeah.
It's two, okay. So my...
I probably gave him the information, so.
Your predecessor, was it last year we awarded, was it 49 million dollars to Parks and Rec?
I believe it was 44 or 46 million dollars, yeah.
Your predecessor asked if there was, if I gave him a million, if we found an extra million dollars for Parks budget. He said that, I said, what would he want to put it towards? And he said, operations. So I know that you've turned many things around, and you have wanted to get us up to speed and have done a tremendous job, really bringing everything up to speed with Parks in terms of operations and backlog on trimming, et cetera. But I suppose my question is, I do not think the money that we gave Parks last year is adequate enough for what we are asking Parks to do and with the projected growth that we have in place. So my question is, I saw that there's also a 20, we have a 20% vacancy rate and a 23% unfunded right now. So one, my first, how much would it cost to fund all of those positions for an entire year? And the second part is, how much would it be cost us to fund them for the rest of this year?
Yeah, the rest of this year, Yeah, the rest of this year, I don't want to do that quick math in my head on this podium, but we do know it roughly costs about $2 million to fund all the unfunded positions.
Okay. I, between, okay, so $2 million in addition to fund all those unfunded positions, plus the additional green spaces that we're obviously working to bring into--
Say again?
The city. I'm saying, so Parks is also responsible for the maintenance of the Beltline, correct?
We are responsible for the constructed portions of the Beltline, yes, after the warranty period.
And it's, I'm correct in also assuming that as we've given acreage to Parks, we have not increased the budget for maintenance?
We've increased the budget in 2020, this being fiscal year 2023, the budget was increased.
Okay. All right, well, $2 million to fund for an entire year is something I feel that we should be able to do.
And I think I want to double-check that number, but that is what I recall. And I think the number is either $2 million to cover kind of the premium pay that we are currently, that is sunsetting beginning July 1st, or it's $2 million to cover that, to cover the unfunded positions. I'll just want to double-check that, and I can email you the answer.
Okay, thank you. And I also know that there's been the ongoing issue with stormwater in terms of which departments that falls under versus watershed versus DPR, but I, and I'm working to try to at least sort that out in my district, but I feel that another thing that we should highlight for the record is that there is watershed and stormwater, there is stormwater work that is happening in Parks that Parks would never be equipped to do. And so to continue to saddle you all with the burden of cost for that, to me, is completely inappropriate. So I'm also fighting for the differentiation in that and the responsibility there. And we'll continue to do so during this budget cycle. So thank you for your--
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Keller. I think that concludes the Q and A portion of our presentations. Thank you for bearing with us. And I know we'll continue to be in contact with you in the days and weeks and months ahead, but appreciate you, everything that you do for us.
Great, thank you. Y'all have a great day.
Thank you. All right, that concludes presentation. So on to the lightning round. We're going to move into communications. I believe we have a couple of items that need to be held.
Item number one is 23C-5036, a communication from Mann Phillips, President of Atlanta Planning Advisory Board, submitting the appointment of Mr. Bob Morris to serve as a member of the Atlanta Beltline Tax Allocation District Advisory Committee. This appointment is for a term of two years.
Actually, can we take that item along with two and three as a block, so we can take them all together?
Item number two is 23C-5037, a communication from Mann Phillips, President of Atlanta Planning Advisory Board, submitting the appointment of Mr. Ronald Grunwald to serve as a member of the Atlanta Beltline Tax Allocation District Advisory Committee. This appointment is for a term of two years. And item number three, 23C-5038, a communication from Tanya Greer, County Clerk, to the Fulton County Board of Commissioners, submitting the appointment of Mr. Lamar Willis to serve the Atlanta Beltline Tax Allocation District Advisory Committee. This appointment is for a term of two years.
All right, I'll go ahead and move to hold. Second by Bakhtiari, please open the vote.
Vote is open.
All right, the motion to hold, assume carries, yes, six yays, zero nays. The item is held. That completes communications. That takes us to ordinances for first reading.
Item number five, 230-1165, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to amend Part III Land Development Code, Part 15 Land Subdivision Ordinance, to create new regulations regarding minor subdivision of land and for other purposes. And item number six, 230-1166, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee authorizing the mayor on behalf of the Department of Parks and Recreation to accept a reimbursement grant award from Bright from the Start, Georgia Department of Early Care and Learning for the 2023 Summer Food Service Program, in an amount not to exceed $796,788.0 in accordance with Section 2-910 of the Atlanta Code, and authorizing the amendment of the fiscal year 2023 intergovernmental grant budget to anticipate and appropriate, and authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to enter into any necessary agreements in conjunction with the Summer Food Service Program and for other purposes.
All right, those are our two items for first reading. Going on to ordinances for second reading, we have items seven through 10, which are all CDP amendments that need to travel with companion legislation through zoning. So I'll take those items as the block, and then we'll go ahead and do the necessary legislative action for that.
Item number seven, 230-1113, CDP 2239, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to amend the land use element of the 2021 Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan so as to redesignate property located at 950 West Marietta Street Northwest and 0 West Marietta Street, from the industrial land use designation to the mixed-use land use designation and for other purposes. Item number eight, 230-1114, CDP 232, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to amend the land use element of the 2021 Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan so as to redesignate property located at 2120 and 2130 Marietta Boulevard, and parcel ID listed here, from the industrial land use designation to the mixed-use medium-density land use designation and for other purposes. Item number nine, 230-1115, CDP 233, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to amend the land use element of the 2021 Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan so as to redesignate property located at 646, 648, and 652 Echo Street Northwest, from the low-density residential land use designation to the medium residential, medium-density residential land use designation and for other purposes. And item number 10, 230-1116, CDP 234, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to amend the land use element of the 2021 Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan so as to redesignate property located at 820, 830, 832, 836, and 1580 Flat Scholz Road Southeast, and 816 Maynard Terrace Southeast, from the single-family residential land use designation to the low-density commercial land use designation and for other purposes.
All right, colleagues, these items, once again, were discussed at last week's first quarter CDP public hearing. There's companion legislation moving through zoning, and so until that goes through zoning, I'm going to go ahead and move to hold so that they can travel together. Second by Bakhtiari, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
All right, the motion to hold is favorable, six yays, zero nays. That takes us to item number 11.
230-1131, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee authorizing the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the United States Tennis Association of Atlanta for the implementation of a junior and adult tennis apprentice program at the city, at City of Atlanta Tennis Center sites, for a term of one year with two one-year renewal options, waiving the competitive procurement provisions contained in Part II, Chapter II, Article 10, Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City Code of ordinances, in order to reengage USTA to continue to provide a tennis junior and adult tennis apprentice program at the various tennis centers and for other purposes.
Deputy Commissioner Ross.
Thank you, Chairman Dozier and members of council. This agreement renews a current agreement that we have, USTA Atlanta. They have been here for one year. In that time, they've offered over 72 students apprentice programs for both juniors and adults. Currently, we offer this program right now at McGee and at Bitsy. We have three adult classes and one junior class. The program allows for citizens to start tennis by getting for $60, six lessons, a racket. They get membership in the USTA membership itself, as well as in their league, so they can actually play after they have gone through the program. So this MOU allows us to continue this program for an additional three years in one-year increments, and we look forward to seeing it continue.
Thank you. Councilman Bakhtiari.
Yeah, can I get this at some of my tennis courts? $60 for all that is unheard of tennis.
It is a great deal. I will say, USTA did mention, we have more interest in the program than instructors. And so if you have tennis instructors that would like to be a part of this program, they register through the USTA Atlanta, and they can be a part to help teach this program.
I can help with that.
Thank you.
Motion to approve by Bakhtiari, second by Winston. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. And the vote is closed.
Item is adopted, I think, maybe--
Six yays.
Six yays and zero nays. Just wanted to make sure it comes up on the screen so I say the right thing. All right, next item, item 12.
There's a substitute in your packet for number 12.
Thank you so much, colleagues. There's a substitute that includes language replacing the placeholders to provide that the mayor or his designee shall be authorized to expand applicable units from 70 to 85 units, and it also eliminates the maximum funding amount for, of $700,000 from the small multifamily developer loan program. I'll move to bring forth the substitute. Second by Wes Morland, please open the vote.
Vote is open. And the vote is closed. Six yays.
All right, six yays, bring forth the substitute, zero nays.
I'll read it in the caption for the substitute.
Thank you. And then who is going to be speaking to this item? Okay, Councilmember, Wes Moore will speak to it. Go ahead.
An ordinance by council members Andrea Elboon, Michael Julian Bond, and Matt Wes Morland, as substituted by the Community Development Human Services Committee, in ordinance to authorize the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to execute the third amended and restated intergovernmental agreement between the City of Atlanta and Atlanta Housing Opportunity, Inc., authorized pursuant to 2001779, in order to expand the applicable units from 70 to 85 units, and to eliminate the maximum funding amount of $700,000 from the small multifamily developer loan program, to authorize the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to execute amendments to any other documents as shall be necessary to effectuate this ordinance and for other purposes.
Councilmember Wes Morland.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This paper is from our colleague, Councilmember Andrea Boon, who has worked with both the folks at Atlanta, excuse me, Invest Atlanta, as well as our chief housing person, Josh Humphries. Law has helped prepare the substitute, and I will move approval.
Motion to approve by Wes Morland, second by Bakhtiari. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. And the vote is closed.
All right, item is favorable on substitute, six yays, zero nays. Next item, I believe, actually, item for item 13, this one also has a substitute as well, colleagues, for ordinance 23-0-1136. This substitute adds additional whereas clauses clarifying actions of the legislation in the caption and cleaning up some of the language regarding the codification actions. And so I'll go ahead and move to bring forth the substitute. Second by Bakhtiari, please open the vote.
The vote is open. And the vote is closed.
All right, the motion to bring forth the substitute is approved, six yays, zero nays. Go ahead and read in the caption.
An ordinance by council members Matt Wes Morland and Alex Wan is substituted by the Community Development and Human Services Committee, an ordinance to amend the City of Atlanta Code of Ordances, Chapter 94, Article 2, Section 94-37, to add two seats to the Human Relations Commission, thereby increasing the number of members from seven to nine, and for other purposes.
Councilmember Wes Morland.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Over the last year or so, there have been a lot of conversations among this body about rehabilitating an ad dormant human rights commission. That has taken place. They have started meeting again and working through their backlog. We have also twice in the last 12 or 13 months added additional protected classes for this commission to oversee, and there has been a request to expand the number of seats on the commission so that new members can reflect the protected classes that we have added. So that is the intent of this paper. Law has helped us fine-tune the language here as well, and I'll make a motion to adopt.
Motion by Wes Morland, second by Bakhtiari, and the motion is to approve on substitute.
The vote is open. Vote is closed.
Item is favorable on substitute, six yays, zero nays. Next item.
Item number 14, 230-1138, an ordinance by council member Jason Winston, authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the Atlanta Workforce Development Agency to exercise an option to renew the contractual agreement for the contract number listed with Arbor E&amp;T LLC, DBA Equus Workforce Solutions, a term of one year in an amount not to exceed $750,000.0 for the purpose of providing workforce service delivery for Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act youth programs and services, to authorize the approval of an administrative memorandum to update account streams for payments pursuant to this agreement, to authorize the chief financial officer to make payments pursuant to the administrative memorandum. All contracted work shall be charged to and paid from accounts listed herein and for other purposes.
All right, we have Sonia Wilson Wes Morland with the WorkSource Atlanta. Good to see you.
Good to see you. Thank you, and thank you for having us today. To Chairman Dozier, this legislation is being brought to you from WorkSource Atlanta because we're asking to have authorization to renew the youth contract with Equus, who is our subrecipient, and there is an option to renew for one year. This has been taken to our WorkSource Atlanta Board, and in addition to that, we are asking for authorization to incorporate language that would allow us to update the funding lines based on our participant, the participants that we serve.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for colleagues? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and move approval. Second by Wes Morland, please open the vote.
Vote is open. And the vote is closed.
Item is favorable, six yays, zero nays. Item number 15.
230-1139, an ordinance by council member Jason Winston, authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the Atlanta Workforce Development Agency to authorize the approval of an administrative memorandum to update account streams for payments pursuant to agreement listed here. We owe a one-stop career center with In the Door LLC to authorize the chief financial officer to make payments pursuant to the administrative memorandum. All contracted work shall be charged to and paid from the accounts listed herein and for other purposes.
Ms. Wilson Wes Morland.
Yes, thank you again. In addition to what we just asked for, this legislation is basically, we are requesting, again, the authorization to update the funding lines, because when the initial contract went out, we did not know the participant categories that we would be serving, and so this allows us the flexibility to serve within the categories of our funding.
Any questions or comments from colleagues? Seeing none, motion by Winston, second by Dozier. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. And the vote is closed.
Item is favorable, I'm assuming six nays, says zero. Yeah, so at least two nay, or two yays. All right, six yays, zero nays. And then the next item, 23-0-1140, item number 16.
It's an ordinance by council member Jason Winston, authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the Atlanta Workforce Development Agency, also known as WorkSource Atlanta, to accept a Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act dislocated worker grant for quality jobs, equity, strategy, and training, employment and training activities from the Technical College System of Georgia Office of Workforce Development, in the amount of $700,000.0 to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the FY23 budget by adding to anticipations and appropriations in the amount of $700,000.0 and for other purposes.
And we have Angel Nguyen from WorkSource Atlanta. Good to see you.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Council. Today, we're requesting for the grant for Quests in an amount of $700,000 to be accepted by you all today. I'm sorry. I'm so sorry.
That's okay. She's new, so.
So we've received the Quest grant for $700,000 to serve the unsheltered, as well as those who are just as impacted, and so we're asking for approval to accept the grant.
Thank you. Here's a motion to approve by Wes Morland, second by Bakhtiari. No discussion. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. And the vote is closed.
All right, item is favorable, six yays, zero nays, and just thank you to the WorkSource team for sticking it out this meeting, and it was a long one. All right, next item. Actually, we're on to resolutions.
Item number 17 is 23R-3282, a resolution by council members Byron Amos, Matt Wes Morland, and Matt Wes Morland, authorizing the City of Atlanta to donate a total amount not to exceed $75,000.0 to the Microlife Institute to support the construction of affordable housing on Atlanta's west side and for other purposes.
Motion approved by Wes Morland, second by Bakhtiari. No discussion. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. And the vote is closed.
All right, the--
Six yays.
Thank you. Item is favorable, six yays, zero nays. Next item.
Item number 18 is 23R-3309, a resolution by Community Development Human Services Committee authorizing the mayor on behalf of the Department of Parks and Recreation to accept a donation from the Fulton County Board of Health in the amount of $2,000.0, which will be used to design and develop space at Adams Park Recreation Center for other, and for other purposes.
Deputy Commissioner Ross, bring us on.
Thank you, Chairman Dozier. As stated, this is a grant from the Fulton County Health Department. It's for the SKY program, which is skills, knowledge, and youth empowerment. The grant is specifically for Adams Park. If you remember, a couple of months ago, we actually came here and they gave us $15,000, and they have now come back and are giving us an additional two. So we are super excited about it. The teens have actually designed the teen room themselves, and they're just looking forward to getting this accomplished, hopefully by June 1st is our target goal. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but we're very excited about accepting the grant.
Any questions, comments? Motion by Winston to approve, second by Bakhtiari. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. And the vote is closed.
Item is favorable, six yays, zero nays. Next item.
Item number 19, 23R-3310, a resolution by Community Development Human Services Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee to exercise renewal option number one for agreement listed here, Summer Food Service Program with Meals Pro, Inc., on behalf of the Department of Parks and Recreation, for a term of one year effective July 15, 2023, through July 14, 2024, in an amount not to exceed $790,680.0 to be charged to and paid from the funding accounts listed herein and for other purposes.
Deputy Commissioner Ross.
Thank you, Chairman. Just want to mention a few points about this program. This is a fantastic program. It is sponsored through the state of Georgia, Bright from the Start program. This vendor has done an excellent job last year. We're looking forward to working with them again this summer. We provide hot meals and breakfast to all of our students at campus friends, but we also have a bus, and we go to, I think last year was 10. We currently have registered 15 off-site locations. We're bringing meals during the summer to these locations. If you have a site that you believe might benefit from that, we are still taking applications and going through. We try to fill all of them. This entire program is reimbursable to the state of Georgia. So this is just a fantastic program. We're looking forward to working with the vendor again, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions or comments? Seeing, motion by Lewis, second by Dozier. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. And the vote is closed.
Motion to approve, carries, six yays, zero nays. Next item.
Item number 20, 23R-3311, a resolution by Community Development Human Services Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee to execute the First Amendment to Emergency Procurement listed here, after-school, after-school meals program with Three Squares Express LLC, on behalf of the Department of Parks and Recreation, to extend the term of the agreement one month, beginning May 5, 2023, through June 4, 2023, to authorize the payment of a per-person rate of $1.02 per snack and $4.32 per hot meal, effective February 5, 2023, and to add funding to, in an amount not to exceed $250,000.0, all contracted work will be charged to and paid from the accounts listed herein and for other purposes.
Deputy Commissioner Ross.
I promise I'll sit down after this one. But this program, as opposed to the summer meal program, this is our after-school meal program that takes care of after-school program, snack and meal. We had to enter into an emergency procurement to provide the service this year, and that procurement actually does not get us through the end of the school year. We are one month short. So this amendment would allow that to continue. We do not want to try to have to use a next different vendor for the last month of school, and it also applies costs that are still fully reimbursable that were not included when they first did the emergency procurement back in July.
Motion to approve by Wes Morland, second by Bakhtiari. No discussion. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. And the vote is closed.
Item is favorable, six yays, zero nays. Colleagues, we have no due referred items. However, we do have one item coming off a held. It is, ordinance 23-0-1324, is item number 28, and this item does have the substitute. It essentially makes some revisions within the second, fourth, and fifth whereas clauses. So before we move too far, I'd like to bring forward the substitute on this item. Second by Wes Morland, please open the vote.
The vote is open. Vote is closed.
Motion to bring forth the substitute, carries, six yays, zero nays. Please read the caption.
22-1324, substitute ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to adopt the Freedom Park Master Plan 2021, to be included in the City of Atlanta 2021-- Comprehensive Development Plan so as to incorporate the plan into the Comprehensive Development Plan and for other purposes.
I stand back up here again by Mr. Jeffery Buckner. Thank you for entertaining this. This has been on hold for a number of months. We're also joined today with Beth McDonald with the Freedom Park Conservancy. Freedom Park is 130-acre park that is well-known in the City of Atlanta. It has a long history. Most of us know it from when it was created as a roadside park, working through GDOT and what was then called Caution. The Freedom Park Conservancy was born in the late 80s to early 90s. Since that time, it has evolved. In 2007, it became a designated art park through legislation, and since that time, a number of pieces have been placed in that park. It was also conceived through the Olympics to have different ability to move people through the park with extensive trail network. But now, after a nine-month proposal that has gone through, the Freedom Park Conservancy generated 163 attendees to virtual public meetings, 3,800 unique users to interact at planning sessions, 1,246 total responses, and 90% of the comments coming from six ZIP codes that are surrounding the park. We have come up with the Freedom Park Master Plan that was initiated and conducted through the Conservancy. This master plan is in no way trying to change the nature of the park, but it creates a guidebook for what the park might look like in the future. So I would like to see, Beth, if you would like to say anything before we move forward with this? Thumbs up? Thumbs up? Okay. I would like to say, one of the reasons this was on hold is Freedom Park, not unlike many of our parks, is unique only in the sense that it involves eight different neighborhoods. Getting eight different neighborhoods together to agree on a plan takes time, and I really compliment Beth and her team, as well as the administration, trying to pull all of those cats together to make sure we're moving in the right direction. So if we have any questions, we're happy to answer. It did go through CDP public hearing last week. Tara Buckner with our Office of Park Design helped work that through, but if there's any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Thank you so much. Here's a motion on the floor to approve on substitute by Wes Morland, the second by Bakhtiari. Seeing no additional discussion, please open the vote.
Vote is open. And the vote is closed.
This is favorable on substitute. Thank you so much, and thank you all for holding tight through this very long CDHS meeting. But that concludes our legislative items for today. Any general remarks? Councilmember Bakhtiari.
Yes, for anyone who's interested, we're doing our Coffee with a Councilmember this Sunday from noon to 2 PM at Joe's Coffee in East Atlanta. Please feel free to come to talk about whatever might be on your mind. No topic is off the table, and please join us. And no, coffee is not free. I'm very sorry, I don't have it in my budget, but I hope to see you there.
Any other remarks? Just the only thing I have is that Community Development Human Services Committee and the zoning committee have a joint work session coming up with regards to the future of SDR legislation in the City of Atlanta. The initial work session was supposed to happen this week. We actually postponed it two weeks to Thursday, March 30. It's going to be at 1 o'clock PM right in here. Hope to see you all there. I'm sorry, council chambers, because we know people are hungry for information and want to talk to us about their concerns and their opportunities. So hope to see you there on that. Meeting adjourned.